Okay, good morning. It is nine o'clock or 9:03 April 27th. I can't believe the last week of April. April 27th and we have a bit of an interesting open session with a couple of information briefs that are going to be coming our way this morning. Prior to that and prior to priority Carol as we always do, let's stand for the pledge allegiance and moment of silence. Okay, before we highlight some really cool things in priority Carol, they're upcoming, let's go around the dice and see what's on our minds. Commissioner Gordon, what's on your mind?
Okay, well, I'm gonna thank you. I'm gonna start off with a few fun things from last week. Director Chris Hines and I went to the McDaniel Environmental Center on Friday and there was an Earth Day event there. It was about 380, 400 students from Gerstel Academy that were visiting the center that day. And I thought it was a great opportunity for both McDaniel and Gerstel to interact educationally. And it was very, very well attended and also I'd like to thank our Carroll County Bureau of Land and Resource Management for their involvement in the event. And it was just a great opportunity for kids to get out into nature and interact and learn more about the environment around them and the importance of it. And then on, let's see, Saturday, myself, Commissioner Kyler Vigliotti and Commissioner Rothstein, we all attended the Westminster's 200th anniversary of their fire department banquet that was held in Pleasant Valley. Very nice event, very, very, very well attended and a lot of history with Westminster being the oldest fire company in Carroll County. But I do have to specifically give a shout out to Tim Cruz. Many people in the community know Tim. He's a former volunteer firefighter and also owns a local plumbing business. Tim was recognized for his life-saving actions on a fire on April 12th. Tim was actually out on a plumbing job and noticed a fire, stopped at the house, rescued and made sure the two parties in the house were okay as well as the animals. So gotta thank Tim for that. I know, I know Tim personally, good guy and very modest individual, but it's great to have people in Carroll County looking out for everyone in our community and can't say enough about that. And that's all I have this morning. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Kyler.
Good morning. Saturday, I went to Hampstead Volunteer Fire Company's Phase One, I guess, dedication opening and got to see their plans moving forward in the morning. And then the evening, I went to Westminster's 200 year and I think Westminster, this is kind of the start of their celebration. I think we're gonna see stuff through, through the fall celebrating and then it's great. Last night, I went to Veterans Appreciation Dinner down at Sykesville American Legion hosted by the Freedom Lions. And I told a couple of them, I know you're involved in it. I thought they just did French fries at the Sykesville Carnival. I didn't, I didn't know they did anything else, so.
They do a lot.
It was very nice to see all they do and talk to all them and it was a great crowd there. Also yesterday, Kevin Addicks was at the Ag Center and Chuck Muscho in the North Carroll Business Association set that up. I think it was a great crowd, great discussion. We're pretty blessed. We'll see how the next three years work out, but some of the new secretaries and Lieutenant Governor and the Governor, they seem to know where Carroll County is and care about us and we need to take advantage of it as best we can. This evening at six o'clock at the Ag Center, they're doing a dedication for an archway above, well, between the fence and above it going into Burns, right in front of Burns at the Ag Center for Tommy Dell. Tommy Dell, um, sorry. Tommy Dell has been a part of my family's life since he was born and wrestled for Manchester, wrestled for North Carroll, coached for Manchester, a great person who tragically, I think age 36, died with, in a farm accident. And his daughter Josie designed this archway and a number of people donated to pay for it and the brickwork and some of the other stuff going on with it. And tonight at 6:00 PM, there'd be a dedication there for it. The original plan was to do it tomorrow before the Buckwild Tractor Truck Pool started, but I think the weather concerned everybody and so they're doing it this evening. So in case people haven't heard that it changed, it is this evening. And like I say, a great family and the Ag Center, and I try to say this every, every Thursday. I love Carroll County and the Ag Center is one of the reasons and, and the farm community we have who are great, strong people. And, and when something happens like this, and it's happened to other families, farming is not a real, real safe business to be in. And it's a shame. It happens, but it happens. And like I say, I just love that community and it'll be interesting tonight to see people there and, and how people talk about it. His, and I'll quit rattling in a second, his funeral was at the Ag Center and the building was full. It was, it was amazing, the number of people that came out. And I love Carroll County and the farm families and the Ag Center and the night will be interesting.
Okay, absolutely no rattling whatsoever and I appreciate everything shared. Commissioner Garen.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, Dan, there's more.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
There was an explosion in Westminster and, and in a garage and a fire. And people were there for it and we got a very nice letter from Westminster Fire Department slash City of Westminster. And I just wanted to mention evidently what happened is as things were being cleaned up, deputies got called to go some other places. So four Carroll County Public Works employees came there and helped at the scene and worked. And the, the city and Westminster Fire Company wanted to thank them. So it was Nick DePinto, Area Roads Chief, Matt Thomas, Equipment Operator, Tommy Pleasant, Truck Driver, and Brian Allen, Road Maintenance Worker, who came there and we got like a three-page letter telling us how professional they were and how much they helped and, and how thankful they were. Now, I think they definitely deserve being mentioned for this, but, and we talked about it a little bit on the Highway Safety Day out there. Some of the roads crew don't get noticed for the work they do and the danger they put themselves into. It's, it's not a real safe place to be out on highways, even county roads. They're at intersections with state roads and, but, but it's great when they step up and do something like this. And we didn't write the letter thanking the Westminster Fire Company and the City of Westminster did. So obviously they were noticed. Sorry.
No, absolutely.
I had all my notes written on the letter and forgot the letter, so sorry.
It's all good. Commissioner Garen.
That's okay. Yeah, I'm glad you, I'm glad you mentioned that Commissioner Kyler, because that made the news as well. I have some brief comments before I go on. I want to make sure I highlight Mr. Zaleski's next budget hearing, which if I'm not mistaken is tonight at seven o'clock at the Carroll County Library in Mount Airy. So I want to highlight that to everybody who's watching and listening from my district, District Four, that if you want to hear more about the budget, go to the library tonight at seven o'clock. So.
Details you'd ever want.
Everything you'd ever want to know about a budget. I just want to make some brief comments. Good morning Carroll County. You know, Commissioner Vigliotti, I think, mentioned the local elections last week, the municipal elections. And if you're paying attention to me at all in my district, you know, I've mentioned to you before that local elections matter. And I get asked all the time from people and I try to stay pretty active in my district. They ask me, what, what can I do? What can I do to get involved? And I always tell them the same thing first, go vote. It is the easiest and quickest way to make change. Because again, local elections matter. So we've got a very important election coming up on May 2nd at the, the Mount Airy Fire Hall in Mount Airy for three open seats on the Mount Airy Town Council. Two people running, two new, two, one returning, one incumbent town council member and two new town council members. So I just want to encourage everybody who's listening, if you're in a municipality or maybe if you live outside of a municipality and you just care about what's going on and you should, go vote in your town's election. I like to think that there's a bit of an awakening going on in the country. I think the COVID restrictions and some of the draconian measures that were put in place led to this. I think people paying attention to what was going on, their school boards have led to this. But I'd like to think there's a little bit of an awakening in the, in the country and I hope in our county where people are realizing how much, how important these local elections are because they really do affect what happens. And I've rarely ran into anybody who's happy with what's going on in their town. So my advice again is to go vote. Find out who these candidates are, do your research. If you like one of them, vote for them and in the meantime, even maybe give them a call and, and give them a hand. Because I can speak to you as somebody, we've all been through an election recently. It's always nice to get some nice phone calls every once in a while, people who want to help us. So get out and vote Carroll County. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vigliotti.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothstein. So I was all over the place this past weekend, including the 200th anniversary of the Westminster Fire Company. So I won't go into detail about that. I will of course echo and associate myself with Commissioner Garen's comments about municipal elections. If you do want to see solid change or solid things happen in a daily way, municipal elections, if you live in a municipality, are the way to do it. And I will also very briefly mention something else that, you know, of course, over the weekend, Earth Day and everything, I was all over the county. And it's important to remember that we have a beautiful park system here. You know, I want to give a shout out to janitorial and facilities as well. This morning I was coming into the, the building and I ran into a woman who works in, in janitorial and she was explaining that, that, you know, they do a lot of stuff that people typically don't ever see. And I think it's important to say thank you to them because, you know, it's not just for the people who work in, in the county buildings, but it's for the citizens who come to have services rendered to them. And then to facilities and those who take care of the parks. You know, you go play soccer or football or you, you go play, I guess pickleball is the, the new big thing, right? The new thing. And you really don't think about the people who put in a lot of time and effort to make these parks usable for everybody. And so they are, do a great deal of thanks as well. And that is it for me this morning. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. When you ran into her, you didn't hurt her or anything, did you?
No, but she almost ran into me with a garbage can.
Okay, just curious. There is an upcoming, because you mentioned Parks and Rec, an upcoming fishing derby, youth fishing derby Saturday, isn't it? In Westminster and it's like.
At the Westminster Community Pond.
Yeah, like 300 kids have already signed up. It's like the largest sign up. I think they're stocking the pond like now, you know.
Commissioner Rothstein, do you qualify under the age limit?
I can, I can get on my knees and do it, no problem. But it's pretty exciting. So, so you're absolutely right about the, the parks. Municipalities, again, reiterating the, the elections, they definitely do matter. And I think all the municipalities are being touched. I know Manchester, Toneytown, Sykesville, Mount Airy, Westminster, all have elections. And just want to focus, my comments, because a lot of it was already said, was the partnership that we have with the municipalities. Just like Commissioner Kyler read an appreciation letter from Westminster. Getting these appreciative type letters and correspondence from the municipalities, having the, understanding what's going on in the school system and a relationship we have with the Board of Education, having a relationship with the delegation, the five that are representing Carroll County. A few of us were at the breakfast on this past Saturday. It was a legislative breakfast where the legislators, for the most part, did a very good job sharing what their priorities were in, in the past few months down in Annapolis, carrying the voices of Carroll Countians. So they are responsive, they're available. So I, I ask those that have concerns, reach out to them. And I've been very appreciative of our legislators' responsiveness to our community, just as my colleagues' responsiveness to our community. It's not one or the other, it's all of us together. On Friday, I attended the BMC, the Baltimore Metropolitan Council. And the Baltimore Metropolitan Council are the leaders around the, the region. So you got Calvin Ball, you got Howard County, Enron the County, myself, Baltimore City, Natcha, the next couple down is Hartford County.
Senator Ferguson.
Oh, Senator somebody. Okay.
He's the president of the Senate.
Okay. Oh, President, I, I should know that. Okay. So anyway, the, the importance of this council, just like some of the other regional, you know, councils and boards, is we look at the regional problems and regional issues. Highlighting this one was, well, not at this meeting, but education is a real big, that's why we go to Mako. That's why we participate to try to figure out how to break through some of the legislative challenges, you know, that we may have, especially when it comes to funding things like education over the next few years. But that was my initial meeting with them and, you know, we, we look at again, regional, regional concerns and also regional transportation concerns that hit us in Carroll County. You know, if not, if we're not willing to be at the table, then it's hard to complain about something. So it's kind of like Commissioner Garen, if you're not willing to vote, then it's kind of hard to complain about something and be valid in your complaints. Okay.
One, just to, just for every, so the fishing derby is Sunday.
Okay.
From eight to noon at the Westminster Community Pond. Just, just.
As I shared, the fishing derby is Sunday from eight to noon in Westminster Community Pond. Thank you. The last thing I want to share is, Celine wanted to come on up with our guest. We have an awesome event coming up next Sunday and the weather looks to be perfect, as it should. It will be our second annual Veterans Celebration. And Celine, if you can do me a favor, make the introductions and let's hear what the gentleman have to say.
So I'm joined today by Bill Nash, who is our Chair of our Veterans Advisory Council, and also Mark Fisher, who is the Chair of our event, of our event committee for the celebration. They wanted to come and, and help us support the announcement of our celebration coming up. Do you want to tell the folks when it is and then I'll, I'll get into some of the details of the event?
As Commissioner Rothstein mentioned, it's Sunday, May 7th, from noon to four at the Farm Museum. Last year was our inaugural one and it was a learning experience for us, but we still had, I believe, two or 3,000 people there, right? And it wasn't bad for our first time and a lot of community support. So we learned a lot of things last year and we're looking forward to an even better event this year. We have the Army Six String Band coming. Reagan Years is playing, which is a very popular band that has a big following. We have plenty of food and drinks and beer, Commissioner Rothstein. And children's activities. The animals are there at the Farm Museum now. So there's just going to be a lot to do for the whole family and it's a great way for our county to be the premier county in the state in honoring our veterans.
Events like this are extremely important to our veterans community. Depending upon whose numbers you use, we have anywhere from 11,500 to 13,000 veterans in the county. Last year, we attracted two to 3,000 people. Hopefully this year we will have more. We are constantly looking for additional ways to get veterans more involved in the best kept secret that the county has and that is our Veteran Services Program. Hopefully these events will attract enough people and get the word out that our county is the best in the state.
Now fantastic. And, and Bill, you being 29, you're one of the youngest in your American Legion.
Yes, I am. We often have the, in our meetings, unfortunately, we have 450 some odd members. I am also the membership chairman and the subject always comes up, let the younger members do the job. And I look around the room and I say, I'm the youngest guy in here and I'm 76. And that's a problem that we have is that getting younger people involved. I realize that they have mortgages, three car payments, children to run around every evening and every weekend, but we still need to find a way to help those people get involved in the programs that we do have.
And I appreciate and I do believe in giving credit where credit's due. And we've come a long ways with our veterans programs. So a lot of credit to Celine, Gina, Bobby, the entire team there. But just initiating the Veterans Advisory Council, back with Commissioner then Doug Howard and Frank Valenti, you know, over Social Services, establishing the Veterans Advisory Council, listening to some of the challenges and needs like transportation. So we are funding from the county transportation needs. We are funding veteran support officers as well underneath the umbrella that, you know, Bill, you mentioned. Last year was the inaugural event and Commissioner then Dicky Weaver, I love saying that. But anyway, Commissioner Weaver said, we're not getting younger folks into the Legion and we're not getting younger folks to participate. So the focus was a younger crowd at this event. This event, we're highlighting Afghanistan and those that served in OEF and in Afghanistan. They're still getting older. I mean, I'm, you know, I served both in Iraq and Afghanistan and, and we're still getting an older crowd. But there's a lot of youngins out there and a lot of them live, you know, and play here and have the quality of life and go to schools in Carroll County that are veterans that are serving, you know, in uniform. So continue to spread the word. It's going to be a great event. And we're trying to make it as active as possible. I think all the Legions are invited and will participate. You know, in this, we'll have plenty of food trucks and I know there'll be plenty of beer, but that's a different story for a different time. But are there any comments or thoughts from my colleagues?
I think there's a lot of fun things and maybe you were gonna say, say more, but there's also some great canopy set up for information to tell veterans what is available out there for them. So it's not, it's not all fun. It can be some learning too.
Right. And, and as you said, the VFWs, the American Legions and all of our VSOs, the Veteran Service Organizations have been invited. And so they'll have tables available with all their information. And, and their representatives will be able to share and talk to the individuals and the veterans about what, what they have to offer and why it's important for them to really engage. But the other piece, we also have Veteran Service Providers that are invited will be attending as well of different services and connections for veterans with other resources. So there's a lot to offer as well as some other vendors that have other services and resources available that help veterans but other people as well. And this is a family friendly event. People don't have to be veterans to come. They can come and help celebrate with us, all of our veterans that are here in Carroll County and beyond. So that's the important part. The recognition ceremony, as you mentioned, starts at one o'clock and that's for anyone that is, will, will be recognizing veterans, but also really honoring those from Af, that served in Afghanistan. We have a beautiful certificate that each veteran will receive as well as a challenge coin. That they are beautiful, that each Afghan veteran will receive. And then also every veteran will receive one of our commemorative veteran celebration pins. And all veterans will also receive a, a goodie bag with some thank yous in it as well. So beyond that, we have a lot of other activities planned. We have more military equipment, thanks to Bill coordinating with folks. We have the helicopter coming in again, which is very impressive. If you were there last year to see that fly in and fly out. It's a crowd pleaser, so the kids love it. The military equipment, the children are able to get on it, get inside it, take a look at it, hands on. And as you said, all the animals at the Farm Museum are available. And the Farm Museum, the actual farmhouse is open for people to tour and has some of the Carroll County veteran memorabilia that's been donated for use on that day by our veterans for people to look at, to see what our actual Carroll County veterans have that relates to their time in service. So another impressive piece of the event. And all of our, we, we also want to thank our sponsors that have helped to sponsor this event. There are very many of them that have come, community partners stepped forward to help support this event as well. And like, like Mark already mentioned, lots of food trucks and dessert trucks and beer. So definitely, and we also have activity books for the kids. And beer, um, so, definitely, and we also have activity books for the kids, lots to do onsite as well, so, and a scavenger hunt, where they could be entered, um, to win a free membership at the Farm Museum for a year for their family, so...
Face painting.
And face painting, balloon animals, um, and i, and if you can think it, let us know, for next year, we'll, we'll keep it on the list, so, lots going on, on that event, and noon to four on, uh, May 7th, it's a Sunday.
La, um, last night, we had a Veterans Celebration, as Commissioner Kyler said, from our Freedom Lions Club, and I spoke about events happening in Carroll County, and then I also spoke about the importance of the Veterans Card, you know, that I have, going through the VSO, and, um, that all veterans and their families deserve to be recognized, and ha, and make sure that they go through the system. After I spoke, you know, sort of cleaned up, I had two veterans come up to me and say, "Hey, how do I do this?" And that was perfect, you know, and I'm able to push those names, write to, to, uh, Celine, your team, and they are now being, taken care of, and they're gonna connect with a VSO, they both have their two-fourteens, and, um, they will go through the process. It's one veteran at a time, we can't think, we can't boil the ocean, and we shouldn't try. This is a opportunity to recognize veterans, but also recognize veterans that are still not in the system, that deserve to be in the system, so, and the VA card is an important piece, I'm being seen by the VA, uh, so, just wanted to throw that out there, so...
You also mentioned last night, and you normally do, um, a lot of veterans are reluctant to take advantage of this, but something they need to think about, the spouses, the families who are all invited to this event too, they've all sacrificed too, so, so veterans, if you're listening, if you don't want to do it for yourself, think about your family and, and how you're helping them.
No, I appreciate it. Any other, uh, comments?
I'll just make one real briefly, um, echoing your points about, you know, them looking out for their families is, is very valid, very valid, and I agree with you completely. Um, would like to thank all of you and everybody involved with setting up this wonderful event, was there last year at the inaugural event, look forward to this one, um, I think it's just a true testament to the community as a whole, whether it be the individuals, the companies and the sponsors, that we, you know, we do recognize and we do support our veterans, and I know sometimes there's people that don't take full advantage of that, but we're, we're trying to work for that with everybody, and I think it's, I think it's wonderful that we try to give back to those that have given so much to us, so I appreciate everything you all and everyone involved in this has been doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll just say really quick, I'm, I'm in agreement with that, I was at the inaugural event last year as well, and I, I heard more than once, it, you know, it was the first time they had been to the Farm Museum, or they'd been to an event like this, and to kind of echo what Commissioners, uh, Rostine and Kyler have spoken about, um, you know, you meet some of the younger veterans, and they feel like they maybe haven't earned, or they don't deserve the services that are available to them, and so an event like this allows them to see what's available, in a, in a kind of non, uh, I don't know what the right way to say this, like a non-committal kind of way, they see that something's available, and then it sticks with them, and like Commissioner Rostine said, one or two at a time, you're able to bring them into the services that they have earned, and so I thank you very much for putting this together, and for putting that event together, and, and, you know, having been an outsider last year, somebody not in this elected office, you know, you said you'd, a lot of things that you would learn, when I went through that, that event last year, I didn't see anything wrong with it, so I think you guys did phenomenally last year, and I'm looking forward to this year as well.
Well, thank you. We also thank you for your support financially.
Absolutely, so, okay, thank you very much, yes.
And I did want to put one more plug in to just thank some, um, the Farm Museum, and their, their team is instrumental in this planning, as well as a partner, our Veterans Advisory Council has really pulled in on a volunteer basis, continuing on this, um, Ceremony Committee, um, and so they, and again, Friday, we're all getting together again to do some bag stuffing over there for a last hurrah before the event, um, and then also Chris Weinbrenner from the Commissioner's Office has really been the lead for a lot of pulling the details together, so we definitely, it's, it's a team effort, and then obviously all of Gina and our Veteran Service Staff as well, but it, it's, it's fun, I love events, and I can't wait, so hopefully I'll see you all there.
I appreciate, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's talk about purchasing and installing fixed LPR systems. Who wants to come up?
Everybody.
From the back seats to the front, who, sir?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Commissioners.
You almost have us outnumbered.
No, we, we, it's gonna be hard to say no when you got the strength behind you like that, but, ladies?
The Office of Emergency Management, in cooperation with the Office of Procurement, request your approval to purchase two Leonardo LPR F4 systems to be installed at two different locations in Ca, in the county, from Sillex ES, in a sing, who is a single-source vendor in the amount of a hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars. The Carroll County Sheriff's Office, in coordination with the Carroll County Emergency Management, solicited a quotation from Sillex ES to provide two Leonardo LPR four systems for fixed sites. There is a state law in place with certain requirements record, regarding data transfer to the Maryland Coordination and, um, Analyst Center. Sillex ESS, ES Incorporated is the only vendor that meets the requirements since the onset of the overall program. This project will be funded using a combination of Physical 2021 and Physical 2022 Urban Area Security Incentive Grants, therefore, no additional funds should be needed, and I will turn it over to Vicki and, um...
Valerie?
Valerie, I'm sorry, Valerie.
Sorry.
You never have two Vs at the table with you.
Yes.
All right, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
As, as Ms. Dunn mentioned, uh, we are here, um, to request, uh, your approval to expend these funds for this purpose, uh, that was outlined. Uh, this project was developed in coordination with the, uh, Urban Area Security Initiative, or UASI for short, it's a lot shorter to say that, um, Law Enforcement Committee, uh, it is a regional, uh, part of a regional initiative, it is a Carroll County project, but it's a regional initiative overall. Um, all of the UASI projects that we, uh, expend funds for, uh, we receive those funds, it's passed through from the federal government to the state, and then to Carroll County, uh, but it goes through the regional process as well. Um, a portion of those funds are required to be spent on law enforcement, terrorism, prevention, and protection activities, uh, this project fits into that, uh, requirement. Uh, excuse me, um, so, uh, Ms. McDonald has a little bit more detail about the project itself, uh, but I did want to mention the, the regional piece, and, uh, you had mentioned, uh, attending the Baltimore Metropolitan Council meeting earlier, um, the Baltimore UASI is very tied into the Baltimore Metropolitan Council, it's a, it's a very much a regional pro, uh, construct.
Thank you.
So, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Just a little bit specifically about this project, um, the equipment is related to a project, uh, that Sheriff Dewey and I came to you before, probably earlier in April, end of March, regarding the mobile LPRs and hosted server, so these are a version of that equipment, they're considered a fixed LPR, um, we're looking to use those, as Valerie mentioned, they are part of a larger regional project, the data is directly shared with the Fusion Center in Maryland, so that is what also attributes to working regionally for the other law enforcement, and larger, should there ever be an incident that we need that data for, so that's one of the key priorities, that when we lurk, look to develop these projects, working with Emergency Management and the Law Enforcement Committee, what can benefit the entire region. In addition, it benefits local law enforcement as well, um, these are slightly different in that they are fixed, and they go on locations, this project is a little more in-depth, which is why we fit these into this grant, the grant period is multi-year, these projects are much more intensive, working with state highway and the state to get these things in place, so this is the funding, um, in case you ask, well, why, what other funding is there? At the moment, this is the funding piece that fits, and, and it, it, um, takes care of that longer implementation period, because they take, what, three years, two and a half years?
It's a, it's approximately two and a half year performance period.
So it lets us get these larger projects done with the funding. Um, in addition, we've been coordinating, as the other project, with all of the municipalities around the county, um, they'll be able to work with this equipment and see the data, it helps, um, any kind of incidents, uh, we still work with MCAC, the Fusion Center, for any investigations, uh, this data is, is basically able to be viewed and looked at real-time, should there be an incident, things like Amber Alerts, Silver Alerts, they can come through, so, if you think about it, you go to Ocean City, you go around the Beltway, DC Beltway, there's these types of cameras, and, and people are able to, to look, so when you see all the Amber Alert and Silver Alerts, that's, that's information that helps, they're able to find those people, if that car or anything like that. Um, so, as I mentioned, it's integrated with our other project that's going on, um, locally, and then all that data is shared regionally. Um, the two locations we're starting with are in Eldersburg, and then in Finksburg, that is the short-term plan, those were the areas we felt we wanted to focus on, because, um, I know Sheriff Dewey shares information with all of you, and those are the areas that we felt are most important, to be able to start, um, implementing this technology, and be a part of the larger project, but we will be developing a longer strategic, long-term plan to look to see where else, um, they would be a benefit, and work with the other municipalities in the county, to see where, where they feel, and that's quite a large project, working with the state, and the vendor, and all the municipalities, to figure out where we can put all those long-term, but there is also a plan, and the plan is to then continue to use this funding, so that we, we can continue to actually implement additional equipment.
And how long do, uh, the systems typically, typically stay up? I mean, if you install, say, a camera here, or there, I mean, what's the...
Basically, permanent, um, they're, they're attached to existing state highway, so it is not something that's put up and put down like a mobile device, it is, it is permanent. Um, one of the things that we don't have in place now is the ability to see that data if someone is off-duty, so the biggest thing, um, is to have that data available twenty-four seven in certain locations, and I believe you've all received an invite later, and we'll be able to show you some of that equipment in person, if you're able to come and explain in detail, so you can see exactly how it works in the vehicles.
And, and so what is the lifespan of the equipment itself?
It can be longer-term, it's, it's typically longer than five years, it can be eight, nine, ten, um, they're, they're built to be out in the weather and, and handle that, they're, they're designed specifically for this type of, um, environment, and, and they're, they're attached to the equipment, so that they're typically out there longer-term, and part of that would be long-term to, as we go through, then work on replacing, uh, the bigger thing is, all of the initial legwork is what's expensive, to work with the State Highway Administration, then as you go, if you have to just actually replace a component in it, that would be theoretically a much easier task down the road, but it is a longer-term, it's not like a computer where it's just five years, we have some that are, um, the mobiles that are used, and, and they are different, because they can be taken on and off of vehicles, where these are more fixed, but they have a longer life.
That makes sense. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns?
I, I move the Board of Commissioners' award, the purchase of two Leonardo LPR F4 systems to Sillex EX Incorporated, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Second?
I got a motion second, in discussion, seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good day.
Okay, now let's get a briefing on the potential polyfluorocyanide substances, otherwise known as PFAS litigation, Mr. Burke.
Yes, uh, good morning, Commissioners, we, we've been hearing from our, uh, federal and state regulators, uh, they've been looking at potential camp contamination of, uh, water supplies, both public and private, uh, due to the presence of something called, as you said, polyfluoroalkyl substances, or, uh, PFAS, as, and I'm only gonna say that once, uh, PFAS, these are chemicals and products that have been manufactured and marketed for, for decades by numerous corporations, in, uh, numerous products such as non-stick, uh, non-stick surfaces, uh, fire suppression foam, we'll hear more about that. Uh, unfortunately, as the cleanup costs of, uh, in, these impacted water supplies, uh, will likely fall upon the states, the counties, and the towns, and as a result, many of the counties, towns, and states have, uh, joined together, uh, and pursue, are pursuing a multi-state litigation, uh, against the manufacturers and marketers of these PFAS chemicals, uh, in an attempt to cover the potential cost of, of, uh, our probable cleanup costs, and to that end, we have brought, uh, obviously, Chris Hind is here, who knows more about the subject than anybody, and, uh, our esteemed local attorney, Jay Gallow, who loves to be the butt of attorney jokes, so...
It will not happen from this dais. Will you only save those for those?
He wants a break, that's the thing.
Obviously trying to deflect there for a minute. Uh, Jay is with us, he's a local attorney, he, he's going to discuss some possible litigation paths for the, uh, county, as we attempt to address PFAS and the potential, uh, cleanup costs, so...
Gentlemen?
Great, I'll start off, good morning, as your attorney said, my name's Jay Gallow, I have a local practice in New Windsor for thirty years, uh, representing local governments, so I represent cities and towns and counties across the state, on various issues, uh, that may face them, some of the, all the issues, uh, I used to be the mayor of the town of New Windsor, that's how I got into the political business and the government business thirty years ago, and, um, one of the things that has, uh, come forward is the PFAS, I'm impressed with everybody saying the, the, what it means and things like that, so I will not do that. Um, I've talked with the county attorney on numerous occasions about an opportunity, uh, for you to help recover your costs, and so we thought it would be best if we present just a little bit of information to be part of the record, I'm not gonna read all the slides, it's really, I'm sure you're familiar with it, but I really wanted you to have a, the ability for the citizens to know what you're facing and the choices you make, so, um, the PFAS is in the drinking water, and it's not in every drinking water, but it migrates, and there is tests that had to be done, MDE required you to do it, and some of your drinking water has this in it, so that's why you're a candidate to be involved. A, as Tim said, PFAS substances are in everything, uh, you know, they're a chemical substance that are widely pervasive, but there are certain issues that are certain sources that, uh, have caused a problem, because when they are put into the environment, they migrate to the water system, and you can see the major sources of the ones that we're concerned about, obviously aren't the pots and pans and the cosmetics, we're concerned about when they were applied in these types of areas, and, um, we're focusing more on the firefighting type of things, because they were widely used in what is called A triple F, and we've all seen this on TV, and in real life, it's the foam they put on to suppress the fires by taking the oxygen out, and back when this was done, back in the sixties, they used this, uh, PFAS in it. We still use the firefighting foam, but it is now firefighting foam that does not contain the PFAS, and so if you can see that, it could have been made back then without the PFAS in it. So that's basically how, um, the theory of the litigation that is being done across the, this country, is stating that the PFAS are getting into the water systems primarily because of the A triple F, okay, it's not really landfill leaching and things like that, and so, that's at least the, the bottom line, and the concern that we have, in case you don't want to say PFAS and per, all these other names, you can just call them forever chemicals, because they don't break down, and that is the issue, they shouldn't be in the water, they shouldn't be in the soil, they are there because the manufacturer made these types of chemicals, and applied them to substances where they knew would be sprayed around and put into the systems, into the water systems. So, it's been in existence for quite a while, just like everything else, as we evolve, we start to get more particular about the contents of things, and we're all familiar with the Safe Drinking Water Act that came out in the seventies, and they started with different contaminant levels in the waters, and they started saying, you know, you really should have less, 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 well, PFAS has started to become one of those types of things, and you can see, I, I just put a bunch of slides there that said, "This is a focus of the current presidential administration," that they, they want PFAS ma, maximum contaminant limits to be lowered, so there could be less in the water systems that are out there. Of course, when they, when the President, uh, dictates that, it goes first to the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, and they come up with the general standards, and right now, they are still considering what the levels will be, but all predictions will be, they are starting to lower and lower the levels. They call them MCLs, Maximum Contaminant Limits, the citizens don't want to hear that there's any contamination in the water, right, we, we understand that, and that it should be absolutely perfect, the reality is, there is no perfect water, there is contaminants in all the water, but some contaminant levels do not affect you, and so, when EPA gets involved, then they get the state, because the state carries out what EPA... get the state, because the state carries out what EPA wants, and so the Maryland Department of the Environment, and then starts doing their work to tell, are they going to administer these things? And they required several rounds of testing in the past couple of years where all the water service providers had to test for PFAS and find out what they were, what the problems they're dealing with. And then they had a new round of testing, and eventually they're using this data to see who are the affected people. Thus, why I'm in front of you, because you are one of them. This is new to us, but it's not new if you're in the industry. You can see that they, this started back in 2009, when they started focusing on this. And they became unregulated contaminants. That's what their, their line is, is when it's not something that you actually have to treat, but it probably shouldn't be there, and they start studying it. And so as you can see, the timeline gets quicker and quicker. From 2009, it kind of drags out, and then they start styling in 2021. And then, of course, the latest this year, uh, EPA is going to come out with mandatory compliance for new levels. And you can see what those are. They might not mean much to us, but point zero two part per trillion is really tiny. And what does that mean for us is that as water providers across the state, we have to take that out. We have to treat down to that level. You're familiar with that when you deal with nitrogen and phosphorus and all the other things that you're, you're familiar with. This will just be one more thing. The problem is, one more thing out means a lot of money spent to get it out. Okay? It's not just a simple thing. There's different filtration methods that can be used, carbon filters. There's different ways that can be done, but everything always equals what happens in front of you every day, money, because it's going to cost money to do. So cities and towns and counties across the, and states across the country have said, this isn't right, that we should have to pay for this because we did not put the chemicals in there. We did not do this at all. And in fact, the companies that manufactured the chemicals, they knew they shouldn't have done this. It's the smoking gun that you kind of see in movies where, you know, they knew and they still did it anyway. So they came up with this collaboration of law firms, and I gave you the names there. Buds and Barron is the most prominent one. They're a firm out of Texas that does mass tort litigation. For people who are not lawyers, you would call that a class action, but this isn't really a class action. And the Costage Law Firm is out of Louisiana. They also handle that. A lot of the oil companies and oil spills out of Louisiana. And then my firm is one of the firms in Maryland that's local counsel, meaning that the local clients that I go out and recruit, they don't deal with the big firms. They deal with me because you know me, and I deal with the big firms to deal with that. So that's kind of how the team goes together. And this isn't a typical lawsuit where we file it in Carroll County Courthouse, and we go over and you do what you normally do with a lawsuit. It's not done that way when it, we're dealing with such mass amounts of plaintiffs. And you can see the types of things that we're doing here. But basically, the way this works is a lawsuit is filed. So in this case, it would be filed as the county as a plaintiff against the potential defendants, which we'll get into here. And it's filed in federal court. They've all been amassed in the Carolinas. So there's one judge hearing all these cases put together. And then the judge has already picked, so you're kind of getting in at the, maybe it's like the third quarter of the game here. You're not in the first quarter. The judge, after they formed everything, the judge has put together basically test cases. And they said, it's impractical for everyone to litigate all their specific cases. So it's impractical for 3M to take a deposition of the Carroll County people to find out what their, their contaminant level is. So they picked three cases across the country to do absolute complete depositions, just like you would think. And of those three cases, then, they said they're going to select one to be the case that they try, and that's the city of Stewart in Florida. And that trial is going to happen in June. So there is going to be a trial, and the idea here is this is like a one-size-fits-all. Every case is pretty similar. Maybe the damages are different, the money's different, but in the end of the day, it probably is the same type of damage across the board. So your defendants, I have a lot of the, uh, the players here, you can see, 3M's the big one. They got the big pie chart there. But you got other names here. Um, and the reason why they have, uh, such liability, or what did they know, it's one of these things. And these slides, you can't read the things too well, but I pulled out the important part. They found memos. They found memos from their scientists and their people saying, hey, this is the devil chemical. We know it's bad, and, uh, we're going to do it anyway. Here's another one from 3M in 1978. They knew it was toxic. They knew it wasn't going to break down. They did it anyway. And here's one from 1999 in an email where they talk about the, you know, the probability it's going to kill marine mammals and, and so on and so forth. So that's the crux of everything, is that they knew it and did it anyway. And the interesting part is when they outlawed putting that in the A triple F, they still made A triple F. So they could have done it differently back then. So here's the status of the lawsuit. Like I said, you're getting in on the third quarter right now. It's been going on, this whole matter, for about four years. All the D, all of the, um, discovery has been done. There's been 100 depositions done. You can see the, the number of pages of documents that have gone through, like 39 million pages of documents. And it's just like the movies, they found those three pages out of 39 million. So, and so they call these three test cases the bellwether test cases. And out of those three, the trial is set for June 5th for the one in Stewart, Florida. And everyone expects that there'll either be a positive outcome in this trial, in which case then they'll try to take and extrapolate how to deal with the rest of the plaintiffs, which there's many, or there'll be a settlement. And if there's a settlement, then there'll be a fund established, money being taken. And the question always is, well, how do you get a piece of that? Well, what you are only limited to do here is, once you file your lawsuit, all is required of the county is to file a fact sheet. Obviously, we tell you how to do that. And it tells what your facts are. How many wells are, how many wells are contaminated? How many people do you serve? All those types of things. And that's the only effort that the defendants ever get to do. There's no discovery. Nobody's ever going to have to fly to a trial. Nobody's ever going to have to, to be sworn and deposed. So of that fact sheet, they'll, the judge will come up with a formula about how people will be paid if they're successful. I put on there that there's current participants, at least that my conglomerate represents. I know there's another conglomerate that represents like Westminster and Hampstead, but the ones my firm locally represents is Union Bridge, Mount Airy, and Tawny Towns. They've all signed on. And there's also wider ones across the state. So Poolsville, Elkton, Salisbury, um, WSSC, the biggest one. So everybody who realizes they're going to have expense is trying to get involved in that. And so then the proposal for you is, do you think that this is something that the county would benefit and, uh, go forward with? And while I provided all the documentation, the legal documentation to the county attorney, um, it's very straightforward of how this works. It's just like you see the ambulance chaser, so you can make your, your attorney jokes now, right? This is, I should be come up with the commercial. No recovery unless, you know, no payment unless we recover. So the county and the other plaintiffs, they don't pay anything out of pocket. They sign on, and then the attorneys, all the attorneys involved are going to split a contingency-based amount. And that contingency amount is 25% of the recovery after they recover their costs. And so you never pay anything if you don't win. It's just like the ambulance chaser jokes you can make when I leave. So that's basically what is involved. It's a tremendous opportunity that most of my clients have said, we know, because there are actively people out there that are spending money right now to figure out how to clean this water up. We know we're going to have these expenses. And even if you're a client that had absolutely perfect water, you still have the expensive testing every year. And you're testing because these people put this stuff in the ground. So there is a cost associated with it that the citizens shouldn't have to pay. That's the bottom line. And I'm here for any questions you may have.
Questions?
So, um, this one's from Mr. Hind. Are we certain that we have done a thorough investigation within our own county to identify potential plaintiffs and problem areas? Do we have a finite list now of areas that are affected?
No, we, we, the, excuse me, we, the county have not performed a, that sort of analysis. This has all been done at the state level. Um, so there were three rounds of, of testing that MDE has done over the past few years, and, um, those focused on community water supplies. Uh, and then for the first two, and then the third, they started looking at some smaller, um, smaller facilities, uh, to see, try and see how pervasive it is in the groundwater around the county. And, um, there are indications that it's pretty much everywhere at different, different concentration levels.
So this was a good question for both of you. So if, if the primary culprit of, of PFAS is this foam, you mentioned a lot of different towns, then how did this chemical or chemicals get in, like I say, for town, for Mount Airy, for instance? I mean, we had, we're on well. The well goes up to the tanks. The tanks comes back down into people's houses. How did it get in there? If there's not a lot of foaming?
Well, I'll give you some examples then. I mean, it's different. The, the legal threshold is, you don't have to prove how. That's the best part about this lawsuit. You just have to prove it's there, and it shouldn't be there. And it's a marker that was created, let's say, I showed you, 75% is created by three, uh, 3M. 3M's responsible for 75% of the cost. One of my clients, Elkton, had, is outside, you know where Elkton is in Maryland. It's on the flight path from Philadelphia International Airport. And they had a plane crash there years ago, like in the 60s. And so when they showed up with the firefighting equipment, they obviously used all this foam. Well, the plane crash was on top of their well field. So they're like, that's probably how these wells are contaminated and the ones across town are not. A lot of places are outside military bases, or they're where, um, the fire department practiced with their, you know, when they come out with the foam, they practice these things. And once it gets into the water, it gets into the ground and it then migrates from there. So that's, that's the examples. Some of the towns are saying, we don't even know how it got here. We didn't know how it did at all. And when they think, you know, they talk to the old timers and say, how did this happen? They're like, I don't know. They say, well, maybe there was a car accident on the road. They used the foam then, it got into the water. So that's the kind of thing we're talking about. Thank you.
And I'll add on to that. Is that, that's part of the issue with these chemicals, is that they're so pervasive and they're everywhere. And there, there are multiple sources. Um, the, uh, that's why I think we've kind of seen just the tip of the iceberg in, in this. A lot of the discussion and, and what's been looking at is, is water supply, because that's how it's currently getting into people, right? Is you're drinking the water and it's in the water. So the, the recent EPA actions have been kind of focused on drinking water standards and all that. The other side of that, which I think is where we, the county may get, um, involved more, is, are the sources. So where is it coming from? So we've talked about the Public Safety Training Center. That's, and that's a source that MDE has already started talking with us about. Um, wastewater treatment plants are a source. Landfills are a source. And those really haven't been, been discussed from a regulatory perspective heavily, uh, from an MDE perspective yet. But I anticipate that it's coming.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
So Jay, this is not the first time you've been involved in one of these kinds of lawsuits before. Am I correct?
No, that, yeah, that, this is not the first time. You are correct. Um, I probably 10, 12 years ago, as the city attorney for Tawny Town, there was a, uh, the same type of issue, and it dealt with the MTBEs, methyltributal ethanol, okay? And that was an additive that was placed in gasolines. And it was turning up in wells across the country, and so it was the same type of thing. If you have it in your water source, even if it's not above the maximum contaminant limit, you can sign on. And the city of Tawny Town did. They did not have a maximum contaminant limit problem, meaning they never had to treat for it, but was in the water, and the water shouldn't, shouldn't be in there. And so the idea of joining the lawsuit was what if we ever have to deal with it? Well, that lawsuit, I mean, these things aren't instant. That thing took two years to go through, but at the end of two years, Tawny Town, who never had to treat for it, received $700,000. To them, they received $400,000 because the lawyers took their top fee and off. So, so at the end of the day, prior to your tenure there, there was a big check presented saying, here is for future treatment, current treatment, upgrading your wells. And it was relatively painless. It was the same thing. You have to provide the information. The pain is on the staff's part. You got to figure out how to deal with, how are you going to deal with the future? And this is a situation, I mean, we, we talk very frankly here, you're going to have to expect a self-rescue. Okay? The federal government's not going to help you. The state government's not going to help you. They're creating the standards, and your standards are what they are. You can call them right or wrong. But when have they created a standard that they've lowered where they followed up with cash or with help? They don't. They figure the rate payer should pay for it. Well, the rate payers, the county citizens, shouldn't be paying for something that isn't their cause. And that's the whole bottom line. So.
Thank you very much.
We've, we've, this has been talked about because of, um, you know, how much money to put in the budget and, and all of that. The question I get asked a lot, and, and hopefully some people are listening, and maybe it'll help answer them. Well, first, why isn't it in the budget? Well, it's because the government's required the testing. Well, their next question is, how long's this been there? How does it hurt people? What's the problem with it? Why, why does the government care if it's even in the water?
Right. And, you know, this is the doom and gloom stuff, because you don't want people to take the buzzwords and say, oh my God, this is a problem. But they say that in studies, this causes cancer. This causes health problems. And that doesn't mean the water that we're all going to go home and drink tonight is not safe. It's the same water that we had 50 years ago. And we thought it was safe then because you probably drank from the creek, or if you're over from my area of the county, you stopped with your milk jug and filled it up on the side of the road, and Medford would be, and you thought that was great because it great, came out of the ground. But if you tested it, it has these contaminants in it. And we're just trying to say, with all our technology and knowledge, we can do better. But doing better costs money.
So you're like the Mark Ruffalo of Carroll County. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I hate, I mean, I hate.
So what I'm referring to is, uh, a movie called Dark Waters came out in 2019, and it was a Chicago-based law firm. And I believe it was either his dad or uncle down in West Virginia, a bunch of livestock, um, were killed, died, and had to do with Teflon. It was a, uh, a suit against, uh, DuPont, uh, from what I remember. And he's on the floor shuffling through thousands of pages to get that one email to find the connection. And, uh, i- it's a true story, obviously, but that's, I think, related to what we're doing here. Is that correct?
It's exactly the, the movie example of that. The other one is Aaron Brockovich with Julia Roberts. Everybody, you know, you didn't compare me to Julia Roberts. Okay, that's good. But, but it's the same type of thing where you know that there's something wrong, and that they had to search to try to prove their case, which is their, what they're doing now. And the realities of not joining, I mean, we talked about the positives. The realities of not joining is you could always decide to sue 3M yourself, you know, which is money out and, you know, a huge undertaking. But the concerns we have, um, at least the team that I'm with, is we want all of our clients in before the states decide to get in on the act. Because everybody remembers the, um, the law, the, the way the states handled the opioids, right? And that was all private lawsuits. And then the state attorneys got in on the act, not state attorney, but the attorney generals got in on the act. And then the settlement was all through the state. And then they dictated how the settlement money came out to the counties. How did you fare on that? Not as well as other counties. So we're trying to get all of our plaintiffs up front to say, hey, we were here first. And if the states get involved, you get in line type of thing. So.
John Travolta's Civil Action, that's another one.
Okay.
I think Tom Hanks had one too. So.
No, just saying, I mean, yeah, Dark Waters, it was, I think it was 2019, somewhere around there, but it's a good movie.
Yeah.
That focuses on specifically this type of activity. Okay. Um, although I liked Minahulk better, but anyway. Uh, is there any other discussion on this? Any discussion amongst us on whether we should be joining in on this?
I think that we should. I don't think it's, you know, it's not going to take anything away from us. And if we end up being part of the, the winning team, then certainly will help to have the funds to treat, to treat the chemical. And that's less money that's coming out of the, the pockets of our taxpayers.
Okay. So with that said?
I move Carroll County join the multi-state litigation against PFAS manufacturers to recover likely future mitigation costs.
Second?
I got a motion, I got a second. Further discussion? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I did have one question, Mr. Gallow. Is it true that if you have a phone book, you have a lawyer?
Exactly. I got cards for everybody. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Have a good day, guys. Let's talk about public safety server infrastructure replacement. Thanks, Chris.
Good morning, gentlemen Commissioners. The Office of Procurement, in cooperation with the Department of Technology Services, requests your approval to award the replacement of the public safety server infrastructure to Dias Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $410,202.92. This cost covers servers, networking equipment, three years of software, and, um, the licensing of three years of 24/7 hardware and software support. This equipment and services are being purchased via competitively bid contract, which is part of the state of the Maryland, State of Maryland Hardware Master Contract. This amount is approved in the FY23 budget, and no additional fund should be required. And I will turn the FY twenty-three budget, and no additional fund should be required. And I will turn it over to Sixten to explain what this is.
Hi, good morning, Commissioner. Sixten, the network manager. Um, so this, this is the hardware that runs all of our public safety systems. So that includes the nine-one-one dispatch system, um, along with multiple systems that several law enforcement agencies, including the sheriff's office, rely on, um, within the county, uh, for their records management. Um, so that dispatch system is used by all the fire companies. It's how nine-one-one is able to, to dispatch, you know, calls for assistance. Um, so this equipment has reached the end of its life. Um, you can see it was purchased back in twenty seventeen. We typically are getting five to seven years' life out of our hardware that we're purchasing.
Okay. So it sounds like it's something we, we need to do.
It is, yes.
Okay. Thoughts, comments?
Motion to approve the public safety server infrastructure purchase to, how do you say that? Diasis?
Diasis.
Diasis Solutions Incorporated, the amount of four hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and two dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second in discussion. Seeing none all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I apologize.
I think you, you said it, but I just wanna emphasize, this is all in the budget, no additional funds.
Absolutely. And it's a competitive bid through the state. So it's just a, you know, again, a learning thing for the community, that we receive bids through competitive work amongst us, through the state, or sometimes piggybacking on other jurisdictions, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Thanks.
Very good point, Commissioner Kyler.
You were listening.
Yeah.
It was good. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's talk about Farm Museum fence repairs.
Morning.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
So we are here to talk about the purchase and installation of a new-
Who's "we"?
There he is.
Just in time.
Morning.
Morning.
Right. Yes, as you mentioned, we're here to talk about the purchase and installation of a new fence for the Farm Museum. I'll let Jack kind of get us started and give us some background of the Farm Museum.
Uh, major attraction, I think you all know, one of our major attractions for, uh, Carroll County. Um, we saw seventy thousand people last year went through the gates, and that includes all the, um, the events that we have. It was just a hair over seventy thousand, which is up about five thousand from the previous year. Um, as you know, the, um, Farm Museum is a hundred and forty-two acres, and we have almost, uh, fifty buildings there, not counting the, uh, pavilions. And, um, you take it from there?
Yeah. Last summer, uh, July, we had a pretty bad sto- band of storms come through the area, which caused significant damage to the chain link fence along the perimeter of the Farm Museum. Upon addressing the damage with staff, we recommended installing a new fence instead of clearing and repairing the existing fence on the property. We received a quote from our term contractor, Long Fence, to provide the installation and repair of a new chain link fence at the cost of forty-one thousand, six hundred, eighty-three dollars. In addition, we also needed assistance clearing the fence line, so we've requested proposals for that work. White Pine Construction Corporation proposed the lowest cost in the amount of five thousand dollars. Neither of these amounts were in, were included within the approved budget, and a transfer of funds will be necessary. As a result, the requested fund transfer is required, required to proceed with this work. So we have, uh, two motions here, um, one to transfer funds and the next to, to award the work.
The, um, fence that's in disrepair, is it in common sight of the community? I mean-
It is not, Commissioner. It was kind of through the woods, kind of tucked back. Um, there is some security concerned about folks kind of getting onto the property and, and some of those damaged areas that we wouldn't be able to see.
Even with the fence put up, a chain link thing, fence, would that still maintain a vulnerability of people hopping a fence and staying wherever they want?
Most likely. It's, it's a six-foot chain link, you know, nothing.
So it's a six-foot, so it's not even, okay. Um, so what's the purpose of the fence? Just to determine the property line, or?
To deter folks from, from entering where they shouldn't be. It's, it's along the woods. It kind of backs to another community in that area. You know, we encourage folks to come in through the main entrance.
Are folks using that open area currently?
I think there was some evidence of, um, foul play.
I'm asking, I don't know-
Yeah, yeah. No, that, there was some evidence of, of folks breaking in and, and causing some disruption to the property.
And, and Commissioner, I went out there a couple of weeks ago myself to, to look at the, the fence. And without getting into too much detail about it, I mean, some of the trees, for example, have graffiti on them that you can tell did not come from kids who were there to see cows or to see the oxen. Um, there are, you know, there are sections of the fence that aren't even there anymore. Um, and, and you can just, you can walk right onto the, the property without a, without an issue.
But you could walk onto the property by hopping a six-foot fence, the same way?
The, the six-foot fence acts as a deterrent. I mean, if I'm trying to, you know, if I'm thinking I'm gonna go hang out with the oxen at midnight or something, you know, I'm, I'm gonna think twice about trying to scale a six-foot fence to, to do that.
Okay.
Are you suggesting we put up barbed wire or something like that, or just?
No, I'm just suggesting that, I'm not sure what a fence will actually do to deter. And, you know, again, my background, um, from running the installation, there was a lot of area around that installation that could not be fenced. So there were vulnerabilities to the installation now. Um, we took risk in doing that. It was very difficult to try to fence an entire, you know, installation like that. So just recognizing where those vulnerabilities are and doing, you know, checks, appropriate checks, is what we did to minimize any thing. And, and signage, you know, this is private property, I mean, um-
Actually, Commissioner, to your point, one of the things that was, uh, brought up to me by the gentleman who gave me the, the tour of the fence, was that part of the, the clearing away of these trees near the fence will allow them to patrol the fence and to repair it as needed. So it'll, they'll be able to be self-sufficient with the fence, if we move forward with the fence.
And part of this is cleaning up the existing fence that is in eyesore there, too.
Well, it's in eyesore if people see it, but it doesn't sound like people see it because it's not in eyesight of anybody.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually on the opposite. No, I don't want barbed wire whatsoever. I'm just curious on the use of, you know, close to fifty thousand dollars to putting up a fence that's only six foot, that if kids are trespassing and using, that's not gonna deter much, um, as opposed to signage or other things. I mean, I'm, I don't know, I just, I, I'm concerned about that. I mean, now, if it does deter, you know, uh, things or help minimize, you know, uh, the trespassing and, I mean, if that's out of control, I never thought it was. I, this is the first, I mean, I, we've had this conversation-
The fence has been there until, it just was damaged in July. And prior to that, no, that it was a deterrent. Um, we didn't have any instances that I'd ever heard of in my tenure here, that, that, um, that was a, a problem.
And, and to your point, Roberta, um, one of the areas that I saw where the fence had kind of been trampled down, uh, you could tell that on the other side of this fence, right where the section had been trampled down, there was like a path that had been beaten through the underbrush. So it was like a, it was like a venue for people to get into it.
This was secure, though, the, the whole Farm Museum. This is the only piece that the fence is down. It was secured.
Okay.
And I guess to your point, Commissioner, we are pulling the fence to a more visible area, um, where, where we're doing the new, the new install. It's closer to the parking lot and the buildings and where the maintenance folks work. Um, and again, like, like, like was mentioned, we are doing clearing around the fence as well. So we will have better eyes on it, as opposed to it being back behind hundreds of feet of, of trees.
That definitely makes me feel better, you know? Having eyes on the, yes, that, that, that's good.
But, but then again, you know, when Joe, you know, the, the caretaker, he can't see it from the house where you, or around the, you know, he'd have to go behind the maintenance center and go back and, and check it, you know, constantly. People could come in, you know?
Sure.
Um, he, he wouldn't be able to see him coming in.
No, but I'm sure he has a schedule of checks and-
He does. He does, he does.
And if it makes it easier access for him to see this, then that's always a good thing, you know? Um, I just look at, you know, vulnerabilities tied to risk and tied to resources. So, um, okay.
I love, Mr., okay, I would encourage you, once the pro, once the fence is done, if we vote for it, to try to put up as much signage as possible, and if that's an issue. But I, I am prepared to make a motion. Two separate ones, okay. I move the Board of County Commissioners approve resolution O dash twenty-three dot zero-nine to transfer forty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars from reserve for contingencies to Farm Museum facilities to fund the purchase and installation of a new fence.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second. Um, last question I have is, why is this not put into the twenty-four budget? Why are we doing this now?
It was a, it was a damage that was unexpected, kind of force majeure stuff that came from the storm event. I don't think we anticipate getting a new, a, a new fence anytime soon. So I don't think we would have included it as a, as a regular capital item or operating item.
And, and it is one-time money, and that's why we have contingencies.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion, comments? Seeing here none all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, second motion?
I'll take that one too. Okay. I move the Board of County Commissioners approve using the term contract with Long Fence for the installation repairs and materials in the amount of forty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars, and award the bid to White Pine Construction to complete the clearing in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Second.
I got a motion, a couple of seconds.
Commissioner Gordon can have that one.
Commissioner Kyler, you have anything to say about that?
Um, no, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
And I didn't try to second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioners, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Dekel, why don't you come on up and let's talk about approving Citizen Participation Plan and Anti-Displacement and Relocation Plan.
Before, they thought, I have a quick question. Was Commissioner Weaver termed out, or he just was harassed so much, he decided not to run again?
Termed out.
Yes.
He was termed out.
He was harassed.
Just curious.
Ladies?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm here with Debbie Standiford, our grants manager. Uh, we're here seeking approval of the Citizen Participat- Citizen Participation Plan and the Anti-Displacement and Relocation Plan. As you know, we have community development, development block grant funding that comes through us, that we sub-grant to, um, nonprofits throughout the community, um, as they have capital projects that they want to, um, develop. Um, in our local jurisdiction, we have current plans in place to ensure compliance with these federal regulations, um, that are required through CDBG. Um, we last adopted plans in twenty eighteen that require a five-year renewal, and we are, um, at that five-year renewal time. The requirement, the requirements of the plan have not changed. I'm gonna turn it over to Debbie to talk a little bit about these two different plans and, and how we adhere to those regulations, um, and then to talk about the plans themselves.
Thanks, Celine. Um, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
So these plans are, um, like I said, they're in, like Celine said, they're in place now. The Citizen Participation Plan ensures, and this is specific to the CDBG funding that we receive, it doesn't impact any of our other, um, other procedures. But it, it in, ensures that we are complying with federal regulation around public notice, public hearings, accommodation request, access to the application, and the procedure, um, for complaints. Um, the Anti-Displacement and Relocation Plan, I will say, first of all, we've never triggered this requirement. And if we did, that would be a decision that the Board would make. Because this means that we have either torn down housing, we have displaced residents, uh, or tenants of a rental unit, or we have displaced someone involuntarily from their property using federal funding. So this is not something that we would ever do, because it would be very expensive. We have to then provide lots of assistance to, um, those citizens. So that said, we still have to acknowledge that these are the regulations and have a plan in place to, um, address that if we were to trigger this requirement. Um, so those are the two plans, and we've got copies of them if you would like to read them. But the, that's the crux of the, um, the two plans that we need to do, adopt today.
I do want to also mention that prior to getting to any point where the Anti-Displacement and Relocation Plan would be triggered, you would be voting in advance of that to even have this project move forward. So you would know that well in advance. If there was some reason someone had to come to us, that we really wanted to, um, recommend this type of development. Um, but obviously, as Debbie said, we have not ever had that, um, come to fruition here. And we, we would discourage, unless there was a valid reason for, for that to ever happen.
We did sponsor a rehab project years ago in South Carroll, and, and we had a plan in place for that. They moved tenants into empty units, rehabbed their unit, and then moved them back. So there was no actual displacement of residents. So we are very aware of this, and our sub-recipient's are as well.
What would typically cause a trigger, a triggering, I guess I should say, of that? Just out of curiosity, are there any examples you could give me?
So, so in that case, in South Carroll, and I can't remember the name of the, um, the complex that we renovated, that we renovated with CDBG, but they, they were going to renovate each unit. So those tenants could not be moved, they couldn't be displaced. We couldn't just say to the tenant, you know what, you're gonna have to move out because we're renovating your unit. So what they did is they, they made sure that strategically, they had some empty units. They would move tenants into an empty unit, and, and they moved them. They paid for the moving, they paid for them to move back, they renovated the unit, and then moved the tenant back in. So if we were to move people out without any place for them to live, or if we were tearing down housing, um, or if we were using eminent domain, for example, and we were displacing someone from their property and using CDBG funding, that's what would trigger it. It would, it's a very specific scenario.
Got you. Thank you.
Afterwards, I could talk about the location. I just wanna talk about it openly, but I know what you're saying. So if, if you wanna know.
Okay.
Oh, and I, I just can't remember. It's not that it would be a, a secret, but I, and I-
No, I, I, I know the area. I just, you know.
I can't think of the name of the pri- it has been many years ago. And even, you know, we have a CDBG project pending now that we're gonna come back before you next week about. And we're, that's for an acquisition of a property. And so we had a long conversation with the rescue mission about that. Like, we could not, we did not want to trigger anti-displacement. This has to be a voluntary sale by the owner, fair market value, and then none of these regulations are triggered.
Okay. Any, uh, any comments, any questions for ladies?
Motion to approve the Citizen Participation Plan and the Anti-Displacement and Relocation Plan.
Let me show it.
Oh, I just, instead of just saying approve the required plans, I use the, the both, the titles of both plans.
Confuse me on that, okay.
Me too. Second.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a, quizzical looks, and then you got a second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At least it wasn't as lengthy as the motion I made last week.
Yeah. Okay, for the next couple minutes, we're gonna talk about the Carroll County Economic Development and Land Use Study. Linda, who are you bringing up here with you?
All sorts of people. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, we are here for our third briefing, um, regarding the economic development and land use study. And with us today, I have our consultants, and I'll let them introduce themselves, as well as their team that's here with them this morning, um, as well as Andrew Gray from our staff and Paige Sunderland from Economic Development.
Good morning.
Church, you're feel free if you wanna sit up front.
Good morning, gentlemen. Martin Smith with WGI. I am the interim project manager for this project, taking over for Courtney Powell. Uh, for those of you who met Courtney earlier in the process, uh, she had a beautiful daughter a couple of weeks ago. Uh, so she is out on family leave, and I am, I am shepherding things through until she comes back. And this is Leslie Gray.
Yes, my name is Leslie Gray. Good to see those of you who I've met before. For those who don't know me, my name is Leslie Gray. I'm with a company called John Stover and Associates, JSNA for short. We are economic development consulting, supporting on this project.
Good morning, everybody.
And pass on our congratulatory-
We will definitely do so. I, I have seen photos. I have not yet met Eloise, but I have seen photos, and she is adorable, so.
Okay.
And the transition has been seamless, so thank you to you and your team. So, um, with that, again, this was our introduction. Um, and just for those who are watching, for more information, we do have a webpage dedicated to this effort for the Carroll County Economic Development and Land Use Study. And the reason our team is here today is that we have a public open house again this evening, our second public open- evening, our second public open house at Exploration Commons. The first one was really successful. We had about thirty, thirty-five people show up and really great feedback. We're going to share some of that information with you today. And this evening, we have a great evening program for those that will attend, very creative monopoly-type project, looking at different industries for Carroll County as we move forward on this economic development and land use project. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Martin and his team to give a brief presentation to you.
Sure. So, I'm assuming that everyone is generally familiar with the study and what we're doing. I know we've done interviews with some of you, but the project kicked off back in October of 2022. We went through a data collection phase, had our first public open house, used that to really sort of shape the project and guide it moving forward. We're now at the point of the second open house, at least later on this afternoon, and then we'll be moving into the draft study and then into a final version of that over the course of the summer. So, this is just walking through what has happened in Phase One and Phase Two. We are shifting into Phase Three right now, and let's jump onto the next one. So, this is just a little bit of data about what we've done so far. We've had thirteen key stakeholder interviews, two of our focus groups, the Business Climate Survey, one of our open house surveys, and one student survey. One open house, obviously, the asterisk next to those final numbers is noting that we'll obviously have increases in those numbers after today's process, so jumping through. So, this is talking a little bit more about what was in the first public open house, what its purpose was. We were able to gain a lot of insights from people about what the general sense is of the community for the project that we're working on, and here's some of the results that we got from that first public engagement feedback. Obviously, there's a very strong emphasis in the area on local, small and local business, outdoor recreation, but there's a solid diversity here in the assets and how they were ranked and prioritized by the members of the community.
Paul, if you go back to that.
Sure.
There's a difference between resources and assets. You know, resources are things that we own here in the county, in the community. Assets are things that we can reach out to. And you kind of have a mix here.
Sure.
Because, you know, farms, as an asset, I'd be curious, you know, to dig down more on these and whether they're defined as resource or assets. And if they're resources, how are we, the county, putting more money into it, or our own resources, time, people, money? If they're assets, how do we promote it? Like, local businesses is a great example of an asset, you know? We don't own them, but we highlight Main Streets, we say shop local, we do all the things with the Chamber. But then there's other things we do, you know, the corridors, the infrastructure. That's something we own.
Certainly.
Well, some of them, I mean, interstate highways, we don't, so, but that's important, you know?
That's a good question.
So...
That's a good question.
I just think further breakdown, and I think you're also going to have further breakdown on what parts of the county have been more engaging than other parts, and how we can also highlight that, so. By the way, your QR code works, even on a small, even on a small little box, so.
That's the hope.
Okay.
So, this talks a little bit more about what some of the county's strongest assets are, where are some of the county's biggest opportunities. We took some of that information, and into the final report, we'll be producing some maps that will help to visually display some of the information that we got from that public process.
And if I made this particular exercise here, again, we've tried to have really engaging community meetings, so what we do is we ask participants to circle on a map areas that they thought had the strongest assets, resources pool for the county. And so, this map demonstrates all of that information layered up, and so the darker the reddish color, the more that the participants felt that that particular area had a strong pull toward it. So, you can see the Westminster, the Freedom area, to the most extent, a little lesser amount, Aryan Hampstead, and then our other municipalities as well. And our corridors, so people weren't shy about circling big areas.
Okay.
So, this is some of the public engagement feedback that we heard from some of the different stakeholders. One, to highlight, local businesses are critical to the success of Carroll County, small towns, small shops, locally owned businesses, good food. These are the things that people will come to Carroll County for. We heard a lot of very positive feedback about the small business communities, the Main Street communities within the county, and certainly from an economic development standpoint, one of the things that you will see emphasized in the report is that small and local business connection, because that is a consistent response that we've gotten back.
This is, I think, a really telltale slide. We were at Secretary Addicks breakfast yesterday, and there was a handful of FFA young ladies, you know, the Farmers Association, Future Farmers, and they were all in ninth and tenth grade, and what they were talking to me about is, "There's nothing to do here in Carroll County," you know? So, that's pretty cool. I mean, they do certain things, but they want more. And we talk about aging population, we see growth in some of the buildings and housing for aging population. This, I mean, what we're hearing, what you're displaying, kind of matches, and that's a good thing, so.
And the guy in the middle here, the guy with the dog, is that the guy from Breakfast Club?
Maybe.
It's possible. Is this the guy from Breakfast Club? Maybe.
This is him after graduation with his pet.
With the movie theme.
Not exactly dressed like Barry Manilow, but pretty close.
After he gave Molly Ringwald his earring or something, so, okay. Okay.
So, talking through a little bit about the public open house that we're going to have this evening, there's two separate components that people are going to be able to participate in. One is a board to vote on the extent that the county should prioritize business development. Everyone will be given, we have a bit of a monopoly theme for the evening. Everyone will be given a single monopoly dollar, and they'll be able to decide which ballot box they want to cast their dollar bill into, showing for less or more business development. And then, we have eleven different boards to describe different, unique industries, and people will have an opportunity to read through what those different industries are, the ways that they can interact, the ways that they currently interact with Carroll County, the ways that they could interact with Carroll County in the future, and they'll be able to, again, using the monopoly money, they'll be able to talk about where their priorities are as far as which sectors they would like to see the county focusing on moving forward. So, every participant will get the one-hundred-and-twenty dollars to invest in their desired industries, and at the very end, we have a board called Spare Change, where if you didn't like any of the options that were available on the initial boards, you'll have an opportunity to say that you think that the money should go to something different altogether, and to be able to write out what your suggestions would be. We don't want to restrict people to only the core issues that we had come up with as a team. We want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to be heard. So, our next steps, in May and June, we'll be drafting the draft of the study, and then July and August, making revisions as necessary based on the comments and feedback that we get from the county, and then delivering our final product for you guys at the end of the summer.
Okay. Any questions and comments?
Just a few. So, Ms. Eisenberg, can you mention again where the meeting is tonight and what time again?
Sure, absolutely. So, the meeting is this evening at 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM is the tentative stop time, but if you come in at seven, we're not turning anyone away, at Exploration Commons, which I believe is 50 East Main Street in Westminster.
Thanks, thanks. The, I mean, it's not a commentary on the study, but for those of everybody involved with it, it's probably important to keep in mind that the previous board commissioned the study, and four of us are new, so, in a lot of sense, this is a relatively new concept for us, although I think we've tried to bring ourselves up to speed. But, the final study itself, that we hope to get sometime in the summer, those will be essentially recommendations, findings to the commissioners, but for us to take action on any of those, are we really talking about zoning here? Is that what this really boils down to for the County Commissioners? Where is the for-action item if, when we get this report, we decide we want to make some changes? How is that affected by a Board of County Commissioners?
Absolutely. So, again, this is a study for findings, and what we'll be doing with that, the purpose we commissioned the study was for the next general development plan, to get a sense of where the county's strengths and weaknesses are for economic development, and to give you all tools in the toolbox to decide what policy changes you want to make, if any. And that's exactly what this would be for you to consider. Would you want to make a policy change perhaps in the development review process? We've gotten some comments that maybe it's too arduous. Do you want to look at streamlining some things? Do you feel we need to make as a county more availability for industrial-type land? Would you want to see changes to our zoning? But not necessarily, it doesn't have to be with zoning. If infrastructure seems a limiting factor, would you want to consider more investment in infrastructure, or do we want to maintain status quo? So, this will give you various recommendations for various parts of what make up economic development, everything from the development review process to courting new industry, to having a land available for those industries, to look at what jobs the county has and what jobs people would like to see in Carroll County. So, it's really just to give you a holistic picture of what's happening from that perspective, and to give you the best information available to make any decisions that you choose to make.
Thanks.
And also, just one other point of clarification. We are doing this for the entire county, you know, again, we only have authority over the county, not the municipalities, but we have been working with the municipalities, so this is valuable information to them as well to make decisions, because what happens in the county just doesn't stop at the border of Westminster to Carroll County's oversight. So, we want to make sure that we're including them throughout this as well.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because people within the municipalities, I mean, I think a lot of times, they feel like they either don't know about a process and how it operates, or don't know who to speak to, and they're really kind of running out of excuses, because they can always reach out to us, they can always reach out to Commissioners for help when they know who to talk to at the county level. I'm talking about the municipalities themselves, so if you're listening and you help run one of those municipalities, you know, you can get involved in all these things, like Ms. Eisenberg just said.
Absolutely.
Oh, great point. Any other comments? If you can go back to that one slide with the Breakfast Club on it, that'd be good. You know, this is, this is a process, this is a journey to help us, again, figure out how to allocate our county resources, where to put more of our time, our people, our funding, our money, our relationships within the Chamber, within, like Commissioner Garrett, with the municipalities, with the community associations, you know? And figuring out how best to communicate on all of these initiatives, and it's very difficult. Some people like social media, and whether we like it or not, it is a tool being used by some. Unfortunately, some using it as, you know, you know, their frustration, you know? And how to then crack through that and get them part of a solution. Some don't want to be a part, so they just want to continue to be a frustration, but I do believe that there's a lot of folks that want to be a part of a solution, and there'll always be people, "I didn't know about this, I didn't know about this event, I got that," but, so the more we take this slide and share it with those associations that are on social media, and we know who they are, I mean, the Freedom Club, or not Freedom Club, the Freedom District has one, the Finksburg District has one, all the municipalities have, you know, so embedding these or sharing these with those social media, newspaper, I mean, this is a very good slide for the newspaper to share and say, "This is what's coming out. This is from already some public engagement feedback." And every one of us, and I'm not, you know, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I believe every one of us have seen every one of these hard-line bullet topics from somebody, or if not some group. I know I have. Tedious development process, you know, we've heard that. Lack of infrastructure, and some of the roads, and aging population, the younger generation. Transit systems and networks, interesting. Yeah, so, I appreciate all the work you're doing. I think this can be a very valuable tool to develop our master plan and develop our path forward.
And Commissioner, it's important, too, because, I mean, this really is a direct way that citizens can be engaged in what is in effect the planning process, the whole... And the other interesting thing about it, too, is that we will all get comments, whether it's email, you know, on social media, in person, when we're at an event, or just around the county, about how, you know, somebody would like to see X or Y, but to know that all of this input will be tabulated in a way that we can actually collate the information and see it in a kind of presentable way will help us to better understand, I think, the range of the needs and the depth of the needs, right? So, instead of just getting like a comment here and there, there'll be something that's substantial that says, you know, X number of people are interested in, I don't know, agritourism or something. And I think, again, this is a phenomenal way for citizens to be involved specifically in that process of seeing, of telling us where they want to see the future of the county head.
Yeah.
And also, you know, breakfast club jokes aside, I mean, I'm consistently impressed with the design and the layout of the presentations that we get. They're sleek, they're modern, they're engaging, and, you know, compliments to whoever put these together.
The...
And I am a dog person, so I do have to...
Ah, yeah. Do you have dogs?
I do, I have two.
They're about six pounds each, so we'll leave that to the side.
Commissioner, on that point, that's interesting you bring that up, right? So, one of these days, I'll get married, right, and my wife, whoever she is, will say, you know, "Joe, you're allowed to have two dogs." And if I, if you consider a Chihuahua, right, say twenty-five percent of the size of a normal dog, that means I can have eight dogs.
It's more like six percent, but that's okay.
We all follow volume equation.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that lies.
Not a cumulative weight.
Yeah, this is very good. I really appreciate the outgoing spirit that you all have in getting this done. It is a tool for us to use, that's why we, you know, wanted to move forward with this. It's interesting, the schools aren't in this, CCPS or the Community College, and, you know, additional learning isn't networked into this, constraints and gaps. Maybe that's a good thing, you know? Maybe it's saying that we're doing well, tying our education to our workforce.
Well, that was not one of the predominant comments, but going to education, just so you know, we are actually doing specific target student surveys for the Community College and McDaniel to get at, if you're here, why are you here? Or if you're from a transfer-in student, or you're a community, why stay? Are you going to stay? What are your plans after? So, we can kind of get at what that next generation specifically would be looking for, perhaps.
Great.
Yep.
Fantastic. Okay, are there any comments? I won't monopolize this, but...
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thanks very much.
And our team is always available if you have other specific questions later on. Feel free to give us a call or email us. Our contact is the very last slide in the presentation. free to give us a call or email us. Our contact is the very last slide in the presentation.
And it goes vice versa. If you want more insight input from us and what we're seeing from our communities, please let us know.
Definitely so.
And we'll try to be as responsive as we can.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's talk about, I believe, stormwater management. Sun Valley Stormwater Management Facility retrofit. Ed, would you say that's a salmon color shirt or what?
I like it.
I'm just curious. I'm not saying you don't like it.
My wife got it for me. I like it, so.
I'm not saying not to like it. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out the, the color itself.
Say salmon or coral.
You want to get one like that and you want to know what that is?
That's what it is. It's coral. I think that's what I've been told.
Is it coral?
I would say that it's.
So if I was to order a shirt for coral, that, I'm just, I'm just asking.
It goes very well with this tie.
Let's talk about stormwater management.
The Office of Procurement, in conjunction with the Department of Land and Resource Management, requests your approval to award a contract to Kibler Construction Company Incorporated for the Sun Valley Two Stormwater Management Facility retrofit in the amount of $346,675.53. The Office of Procurement advertised the bid and received 10 bids with Kibler Construction Company Incorporated being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder meeting the specifications. This amount is within the adopted budget. I apologize, there was a typo on the original letter. It should be 10 bids received.
So Commissioners, this, this is pretty straightforward. It's part of our NPDS compliance requirements and it's a relatively straightforward retrofit of an existing facility to something that we typically do is a surf, what's called a surface sand filter, provides better treatment for the receiving waters downstream. So we're just asking for approval to award the contract.
It's a wide range of bids, all the way from 300 some odd to 600 some odd.
It, it definitely is. I mean, usually we do see a, a range.
Yeah.
You know, and I think we've been fortunate where a lot of our local contractors kind of, I don't know, have the better prices, we'll say, you know, but it's, it's something that whether it be overhead or where they're getting their materials from, you know, if they're planning on trucking materials in from further away and maybe not utilizing closer resources, you know, but I think that this does fall within where our con, our engineer's cost estimate was for the project, so.
And several of these contractors, I don't think had previously bid on any of our stormwater projects before. So they're, they're, some of them are relatively new to, new to us as, as contractors. So, and they're from areas where, as I think Janet alluded to, where the cost of overhead is, is higher.
When you, after we award a contract, do you go back to the others and say, this is why you did not win? Or if they ask, are you prepared to have that discussion with them and provide them, this is why you did not win this, this contract?
So I don't know. We, we publicly opened these bids on a, on a Zoom call, and so they're all there. And they know what the bids are.
Yeah.
We read the bids individually on the, on the opening. So they are publicly read, like Ed said, they are posted. And they do have a 10-day protest period. So, you know, to come in, if, if they see, once the bids are posted, that they, they have that right to come in and that 10 days to protest. But generally with, with these, you know, the low bid.
They're pretty straightforward.
An RFP, it's a little bit different because it's evaluated, it's, you know, it's based on a rating system. So then in that case, they usually come in, we give debriefs, we encourage our evalu-, we, our evaluators are encouraged to actually make notes on their score sheets. So it's a tool for them to go back and it's helpful for us to be able to go back to see, you know, where they were strong or where they, they weren't.
Exactly.
And give them some feedback. So that, that helps too.
Okay, no, I appreciate it. Because, you know, getting feedback on why you did not win something and then also getting feedback on why you did win something so you can continue that is very important. So.
Sure. And we will have contractors that will call, you know, and ask when, when the bids will be posted so they can kind of look at the breakdown of, of other bids to see where the discrepancy was or, you know, where there was difference.
Do you publish bid tabs?
We do.
To the bidders?
We do.
So they get to see?
Yeah.
The, the pieces of the other bids?
Yes.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay.
Motion to award the contract for Sun Valley Two Stormwater Management Facility retrofit to Ki- Keebler, Kibler?
Kibler.
Kibler.
Kibler Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $346,675.53.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Vigliotti, I had the opportunity to meet Anthony Michael Hall from The Breakfast Club.
Did you really? That's awesome.
I did. I was in, I was in Fort Lauderdale, this was many years ago. And he came in and actually sat down next to me with his, his date that he, that he had with him. So, and he was very, very, very nice.
That's really cool.
That's really cool.
It was very, it was, I looked up and I was like, oh my gosh. And he was, he was very talkative, very pleasant.
And you know, it's interesting because in the 1980s, he always played like the kind of down and out, good guy. But then by the 1990s, he had taken over like the role of the bully in a bunch of these movies, like Edward Scissorhands. Like I would not have expected that, you know. So that's kind of interesting how that changes over time.
Just remember, you mess with the bull, you get the horns.
Right.
Okay, in the next three to five minutes, we will learn all there is to learn.
Oh, you don't want me to do that.
National pollutant discharge elimination system.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is the highly anticipated presentation that we've been talking about. Yes.
Sold out, sold out audience.
Exactly, yes. Well, speaking of audience, with me here today are Janet Amira and Dead Singer, who you both know. And we also have Glenn Edwards and Claire Hurt, who are our two NPDS compliance specialists. So when I'm stumbling on answering your questions, they will leap into the, into the fray and answer for me. So, but appreciate the time to, to brief you on our NPDS permit. Timing is, is, is everything in that we were issued a new permit around the same time that four of you took office. So we thought this was an opportune time to come before you and, and explain the permit because we are often before you requesting approvals for bids and for grants and, and so on. So I've got, what we've passed out to you is a slide deck that we'll be going through. And I also have the actual permit for you. So we'll be walking through that so you can look at the various components. And I can explain any questions that, that you may have. So with that, we'll launch into it. So we're talking about the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. So that's an acronym. Some people like to call it NPTEs. I'm not a real fan of, of that terminology, but it's the NPDS permit. And this was derived out of the Clean Water Act. And basically, the Clean Water Act gave powers to the EPA to improve water quality in the streams and river of our nation, waters of the US. And the EPA, one of the mechanisms that they use to improve water quality are the NPDS permits. So they basically provide requirements to the individual states and then the states issue those permits to local governments such as ourselves. So NPDS covers a wide variety of, of topics, from wastewater treatment plant, wastewater treatment plants, combined sewer overflows, pesticides, et cetera. But the topic that we're talking about today is stormwater, so rainwater and runoff from storm events. So there are a variety of stormwater NPDS permits that are out there, but there are three that our department deals with. The first one is the, it's called the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, or MS4 permit. And that is the permit that we're talking about today. And essentially, because the county is urbanized and we have storm drains, we have channels, we have curb and gutter and so on, we are discharging water. When it rains, that water discharges into the streams. And so we need to have a general permit for that, those discharges. So that's the, the idea of the, of the permit. There are other stormwater permits that we get involved with. There's a construction permit. As you can imagine, when there's construction activities, a lot of material gets disturbed, that sediment can wash into the water and pollute the waterways. So there is what's called a 20 CP permit that is issued. And we, our department oversees grading operations, construction operations and inspects for not only the 20 CP permit, some aspects of that, but as state law related to protection of, of grading sites. And then we have the industrial permits. So if you have a industrial facility that discharges water for whatever reason, there are, it's called the 20 SW permit that covers that. The county owns a couple of these, has a couple of these permits. Think the maintenance center, the airport, those types of facilities, because there is the potential for pollution coming off of those types of industrial activities, they are permitted individually. Our department does not manage those permits, but we are a technical resource and we, and we provide training and we have to document some of that for our general permit, the municipal MS4 permit. So a little history of the MS4 permit. It was first issued to us in May of 1995. When it was issued, it was just the county. It did not include the municipalities. We were one of the first Phase One communities in the state of Maryland. There were nine of us that were issued these permits from the beginning. Over the years, then MDE then started looking at Phase Two communities, which gone into the smaller communities. And the way the permits were going was that each of our municipalities were going to get issued an individual permit. And we met and talked with them and decided that, that would be very inefficient and costly for the citizens of the county, for each municipality to stand up the same resources that the county had. So we entered into a memorandum of agreement that basically pulled all of the municipalities into our permit. So they are co-permitees. There's a lot of benefit for that. One of the, one of the cost savings is that all of the municipalities contribute to the salaries of Claire and Glenn. So that assists us with our resources. And then from a capital project perspective, and this is something that is often misunderstood, there's an agreement that there's a cost share on capital projects that the municipalities are involved with. And this is not, I'm sorry, it's, it's not that when we do a project in a municipality, that the municipality contributes 20% of the cost. That's not how it works. The way it works is that we've identified the amount of work that each municipality would have to do on a yearly basis if they were on this program by themselves. So those capital expenses that they would have normally had to expend, 20% of that cost through the town-county agreement gets retained by the county and put into a fund that funds all of our projects. So we have a fund of money to do projects. So every municipality is contributing to this fund. And in one year, we may only do a project in Tawney Town. But everybody contributed into a fund that, that helps fund those, if that makes sense. So it's, so it's often been, been thrown out there, well, is this municipality contributing 20% of the project? In theory, they are contributing funds, but it's not a direct, they put in 20% of that. So if that makes sense to everybody. So, and the last milestone to note again is that our latest permit was just issued. All right, so going to walk through the permit. The first couple items are very simple, more administrative. So part one is just identification, which says it's Carroll County and all the municipalities. And the permit is in effect from 2022 to 2027. So definitions, they, MDE did not bother putting in a whole list of definitions. They basically refer back to COMAR and the Code of Federal Regulations. So very short section. Part three is water quality and compliance to the Clean Water Act. So all this is saying is that by virtue of Carroll County having this permit, we are meeting the requirements, the federal requirements of the Clean Water Act. So it's just affirming that for, for the EPA. All right, part four, this is where we get into the meat, meat of the permit. First two items are still relatively simple. Permit administration just says that the county is going to identify an individual, and that's me, to be the administrator of the permit. And I, I signed off on the permit. If you all wish to change that to somebody else, you're welcome to it. Some of these things keep me up at night. So if it was somebody else signing it, that would be fine. And then part B is the legal authority, which just says that Carroll County has legal authority to meet all the permit requirements. If that ever changes, we would let MDE know. So now we get into the technical items. So source identification. This is to identify any pollutant, any potential pollutants that are in the county and allow us to map and figure out where they're coming from. So storm drain systems. Obviously, if we go to an outfall, a storm drain outfall, and we're seeing pollutants, we need to be able to figure out where those pollutants come from. So we need to have a map to show us to trace that upstream and figure out where those pollutants come from. So that's a requirement. Pollutants often come from industrial and commercial sources. So we need to know where those industrial and commercial sources are. So we have those mapped. You'll hear the term best management practice a lot, or BMP. That essentially is a facility or a structure that improves the quality of the water or addresses flooding or does both. So that's what a best management practice is. Impervious surfaces, there is a direct correlation between impervious surface, which is like roadways and buildings and so on, and the quality of the water that, that's running from them. And so impervious surfaces is the accounting mechanism that MDE uses for tracking our permit process, progress. So knowing where the impervious surfaces are is important. Monitoring locations, I'll get into, we, we have to do a lot of monitoring on the county. So obviously, we need to know where those are. And then we do a fair number of improvement projects. You just heard one before you. That was, we do projects, capital projects to improve the quality of the water in the county. So those need to be mapped. So some images to, to just convey some of the mapping that we do. This is a map of all of the storm drain infrastructure that's around the county. There are about 50,000 features that we've mapped and there's attribute information associated with all of them. We collaborate with the municipalities and DPW to maintain this data set. And it's a, but it's a requirement of the permit that we maintain this. As I mentioned, best management practices, there are a variety of different types of management practices. There are structural facilities, which think ponds and, and the like, large facilities. There are about 970 some of those in the county and two in the county, we ourselves own 202 of those. And then there are these smaller, what they're called environmental site design or ESD practices. Think drywells, small bio retention facilities, grass wells, these small types of facilities. We have 2,400 of those and the county owns 61 of those. And then, as I mentioned, the restoration projects where we've improved water quality. I think I showed you this slide before, but I just wanted to reemphasize some of the work that we do. Back when our permit first started, we had hundreds of BMPs, 360 some. And our permit back then required that we inspect those on a triennial basis. Back then, it really wasn't a big deal. There were 360 of them roughly. Every three years, that's 120 per year. We have five grading inspectors. So that really wasn't a big issue. As you can see though, we're now upwards of 3,500 BMPs and increasing every year by a couple hundred. So the level of effort to perform those inspections and then follow up on any mitigation issues. So if there, if something's not in compliance, we then have to contact the property owner. We may have to get Mr. Burke's office involved, et cetera. We have to re-inspect. So order of magnitude, you can almost say that exponentially we're growing in the number of BMPs and what we're responsible for inspecting.
And Chris, what was ESD again?
Environmental site design.
Thank you very much.
Yes. All right. So part four D relates to programs that we have to implement to, in order to improve water quality. And I'll step through these quickly. So stormwater management, we're required by state law and also by our permit to, to review development plans for stormwater management. The reason being is that storm, new development is a source of new pollution. And so we can't, we're trying to clean up the water. We have to ensure that we're not making it any worse. So there's that requirement. And as part of our MS4 permit, really all we're doing is tracking information about how many plans we review and, and so on. And this is also the section of the permit that requires that we inspect them, all the BMPs on a triennial basis. We have an erosion sediment control program that we're required to put in place, so, or have in place. So that's our grading inspectors. They're all certified by the state. The stormwater management program is audited every three years. Our erosion sediment control program is audited by MDE every two years. Our erosion cinema control program is audited by MDE every two years. So illicit discharge detection and elimination, this is kind of a core of our NPDS program when you think about clean water. So an illicit discharge is any discharge that goes into a stream that is not entirely stormwater, so any sort of pollutant. And our MS4 includes any roads, drains, curbs, gutters, et cetera. So anything that gets into the stream from one of our, some of our infrastructure that's not stormwater, we need to detect and eliminate. And we're required to do that by our permit. So how do we do that? One of our requirements is that we have to go to 100 sites, locations every year and perform outfall sampling. So that's chemical testing to see what's in the water that's coming out of the storm drains. And if there's anything that's not stormwater, we have to trace it through the network, find out what it is and take actions to prevent it. We also have to drive around and do windshield surveys of commercial industrial properties. So we're looking for things like dumpsters that are leaking materials, other types of contaminants that are flowing into storm drains. And we then reach out to those property owners and talk about best management practices and how they can prevent that kind of pollution. We have to allow the public to contact us. So we have a website, they can email us, get information through the website, and we have a stormwater pollution hotline. So if anybody observes any, any of these types of issues with green water and milky water and so on, call us up, we'll, we'll do, perform an investigation, we'll get MDE involved if necessary and so on. We perform training, so we provide training to business owners, we provide training to municipal staff because they're co-permittees with us, and our own DPW staff, and we provide training materials and educational information. All right, so now we're into property management and maintenance. So the county owns a lot of properties, including our roads and so on, and all of the municipalities. So there's certain things that we have to do with those, those properties. I mentioned the industrial permits. So again, the airport, the maintenance center and so on, they have their own, own permit and we have to, we assist them and track certain metrics with them. I'm gonna skip over good housekeeping plans because that's new, I'll talk about that in a second. Pollution reduction practices, so we work with DPW on street sweeping that they perform, any infrastructure cleaning, like cleaning out inlets and pipes, we track that. And then reducing things like pesticides, herbicides and fertilizers, which are all potential pollutants. And then I'll talk about the others because they're new permit requirements. So good housekeeping plans. So if you look at the Venn diagram here, if, we're talking about just county or municipal owned property, if a 20 SW, so that's an industrial permit, is not required. And then if certain activities occur on that property that could cause stormwater pollution. So as an example, the Farm Museum. The purpose of the Farm Museum is not an industrial practice, it's a tourist destination, right? But there are activities that can happen on the Farm Museum related to maintenance and storing of materials and so on that could potentially cause pollution. So our new permit that was just issued requires us to develop these good housekeeping plans for any sort of county property that's like that, with recommendations on what staff can do to minimize those potentials for pollution. And that's also our municipalities as well. Salt management is, it's a topic that's been in our plan, permits before, but now we are required to specifically have a salt management plan. Salt management is one of those interesting balances of public safety in the wintertime versus public health, because chloride pollution of drinking water is, is an issue that is of concern. And so what the salt management plan requires us to do is evaluate equipment and strategies, how we, how we apply salt in the winter, whether it's efficient or not, training our, our staff, contractors, public outreach and tracking how much salt we use during the wintertime. So, and trying to make that and to reduce it and, and be more, I guess, efficient is the right term. Litter control has always been in our permit, but it was always sort of a, you should be looking at what kind of trash and litter and trying to put in programs, encourage programs, encourage citizens to pick up trash and litter. Our new permit now has a quantitative number that we have to hit, so we're required to collect 11 tons of trash and litter every year. We can do that through staff activities or through community groups and, and so on. So we do stream cleanups every once in a while, we reach out to, to community groups. In fact, I've, I often take my dog over to Bennett Surf and I ran into a Girl Scout troop there that has adopted Bennett Surf and every couple months, they collect trash there. And I gave them my card and so every couple months, I get an email from them and said, hey, we were out again, we collected three bags of trash and an old bicycle. And so we note that and that all contributes towards the 11 tons that we need to collect. Public education and outreach, this can be on a wide variety of topics, anything water quality related, and it's something that we've always been required to do, but now it's been quantified. We're required to conduct 25 event outreach efforts every year. So this presentation is gonna count as one. And because of Earth Day, we've had several others. We also have a Facebook page. If you do Facebook, hopefully you check out Carroll Environment, so we post lots of information there. So there's a lot of latitude as to what an effort is, so we're really not concerned about hitting that 25 number, but it is now quantified in our new permit. All right, restoration requirements. So as I mentioned, impervious area is the accounting mechanism that MDE uses to track progress. An impervious area again is any rooftops, parking lots, sidewalks and so on. And there's that direct relationship between impervious area and the quality of the water that, that comes, that gets discharged from it. So the way we address this with structural practices is we add a, we construct a stormwater management facility to treat the water before it gets into the streams, and we get credit for doing that. There are other alternative practices, and this is, gets a little confusing, but there are other practices that do not treat impervious area, but they do reduce nutrients and sediments, which are the primary pollutants that our permit is associated with. So things like stream restoration. If you have a stream with vertical banks and the, the material is falling in and washing down to the bay, that's a source of pollution, because it's not just the sediment, but also the, all the legacy nutrients from all the agricultural production over the years, right? So if we restore that stream so it's not eroding anymore, we've reduced that pollutant load. We're not treating any impervious, but what MDE does is they say, okay, you figure out how many nutrients you've eliminated, how much impervious area would you have had to, to treat to get that same number, and then we get that amount of credit. So it's, it's some interesting math and there are a number of alternative practices that we can perform. Other jurisdictions heavily use the alternative practices. The city of Baltimore, for instance, heavily uses street sweeping. The idea being that if you sweep the streets and pull, pick up all the pollutants, then they're not getting into the streams. But it's not a, you're required to continue that on, in perpetuity. As soon as you stop doing the street sweeping, you're out of compliance with your permit. So our preference is, is building the structures that are there and will continue to function without ongoing significant costs, so.
So that's interesting. So anything that we do, we're required to continue doing, whether it would be street sweeping or, or, so I think that's actually pretty clever, that we are able to do something like stream restoration or, or tree planting that is a long-term solution that doesn't require us going back every week or every month or every year to, to maintain. That's very interesting.
Yeah. Now, we do still have the requirement to inspect every three years to make sure that it's still in place and functional, right? So, stream restorations are, and I'm gonna show you an image in here of a project we just did, they are less expensive, but there's risk, because you get a major storm that could come through and wipe out that restoration work, and if you're back to vertical banks and so on, you've lost all the credit and you've lost the investment, right? So there, there's a risk there. So I often think of it like a portfolio that we're managing. We've got different types of projects, some are higher risk, some are lower risk, some are higher cost, some are lower cost, and we're trying to have a nice even portfolio so that we put ourselves in the best position moving forward in the, in the life of this program.
Diversification.
Exactly. So just to talk about some numbers related to impervious area, there in total, there are about 14,000 acres of impervious area that the county would be responsible for through our MS4 permit. Of those 14,000 acres, just over 5,000 have been treated through current stormwater management practices. So one way to think about this is that 14,000 number, that was established about five years ago, five years or so ago. That number is continually increasing as we develop, right? But on the bottom part of the graph, that number that's treated to current stormwater standards also is increasing. So today, we may be upwards of 16,000 acres total impervious that we're responsible for, but we have treated with current stormwater management requirements, 6,000 or 7,000 acres, if that makes sense. So we're, we're, the, the middle part of the graph is not changing. That's the amount that was untreated and that we've been responsible for through our permit. Permit activities to date, we've treated about 3,200 acres, and so there's about 5,500 acres of untreated impervious still out there. That'll last us for the next 35 or 40 years, so we've got, we've got some time. So some examples of projects, and these are large structural practices that is really our preference, because the cost per impervious acre is relatively low, because we can treat a lot of impervious with one project. And these maintain themselves pretty well. Maintenance is essentially mowing them. Each one of these projects is, if I can, if I remember correctly, is a $2 to $3 million project. So the cost per impervious acre, the number to kind of keep in the back of your head of what we strive for, is around $35,000 per impervious acre. So going to, back to the previous slide of what we're looking at in this county over the next 35 or 40 years of 5,500 acres, multiply that times $35,000 per acre, that's, that's the investment that we're looking at potentially in, as this program continues into the future. So this is, I mentioned a stream restoration project. This is the Mayberry Stream Restoration. It's a restoration of the Bear Branch between Westminster and, and Tonnytown. It was, it's on the Mayberry Game Preserve property. It's a project that we collaborated with them on, almost a mile of stream restoration work that we did, and we, we received quite a bit of impervious area credit for doing this project, over 200 acres of, of credit. And the majority of this project was paid for with grant money. One thing I wanted to stress is the length of time that these projects take. This is a picture of the Langdon Stormwater Management Facility. It's one that we received several awards for, primarily because of the innovative use of Maryland Midland to haul material from Westminster to New Windsor. But this overall project schedule is not that unusual in that we started in 2013, the initial concepts of this, and we weren't complete with construction until 2021. So it was an eight-year timeframe. So it just goes, I just want to emphasize that we're talking about a five-year permit, but we have a lot of projects that have been in the pipeline that we've been working on that'll be constructed during this permit. We've got other projects that will start in the pipeline that will not be realized until the next permit. So it's an ongoing flow of, of projects through our program. All right, I'll skip over this real fast, just a technical term, TMDLs, in case you ever hear it. It stands for Total Maximum Daily Load. It's a concept, again, out of the Clean Water Act. It basically says that for a certain pollutant, a stream or river can only handle so much of that. And if you have more than that, then you've got to, you've got to do something about it. We, the county, have several TMDLs that were established, I think through the 90s, related to nutrients and sediment and so on. There are other jurisdictions, Baltimore City has a trash TMDL. Just this past year, the first ever PFOS TMDL was established, I think on the Anacostia River. We believe that MDE, in, in some talks with them, a hot topic, a pun intended, are, is a thermal TMDL, looking at temperature of streams. Carroll County being a headwater stream, we've got a lot of cold water streams that support cold, cold water trout. If the temperatures are exceeded to support that cold water trout, we may get issued a TMDL to try and reduce the temperatures in the streams. So this portion of the permit, all it basically says is that the TMDLs is part of the Clean Water Act, we have plans to address them, and if a new TMDL comes out during the permit time, we'll be, we are required to address it. So if MDE in year two or three says this watershed has a temperature TMDL, we'll be required to address that. Assessment of controls, they're, this is looking at how effective is the work that we're doing? So there are two assessments that we perform. One is BMP effectiveness, the other is looking at, at the overall health of the watershed. In our permit, you'll, if you read through it, there is a reference to a PCB source tracking. That does not apply to Carroll County. We do not have a PCB TMDL. We tried to get MDE to take it out of our permit because it doesn't apply to us, but they didn't want our permit to be different than others. So they acknowledge that it doesn't apply to us, but it, it's in our permit. So looking at BMP effectiveness, we have a, a location where we're testing, testing the water. We test it during storm events, we test it during dry weather flow, and we look at what's happening to the stream channel downstream. What's interesting in our new permit is that they actually gave us an, two options. There are other municipalities, other counties, where they spend lots and lots of money with consultants to do this kind of monitoring. I know because I was one of those consultants. And, but here in Carroll County, we do all of the work in-house. And so MDE gave the option that you can reduce some of those consultant costs by, if you pay our consultant, which is the Chesapeake Bay Trust. If we want to pay, write them a check for $75,000 a year, then that takes care of this requirement. What we've calculated is that we spend about $18,000 a year to do this. So we're gonna stick with option two, especially because there's no guarantee that anything that the Chesapeake Bay Trust would do would be in Carroll County. So they'd, they'd be generating data somewhere in the state, but it wouldn't apply to us. So we prefer that we're in tune with the work being done and it's cost-effective. We also do watershed assessment monitoring, so that's looking at all the watersheds in the county, and we have multiple locations where we're looking at biological diversity, bacteria trend analysis and chloride. And again, this is another option where MDE said, if you write us a check for $166,000 a year, we'll take care of this with our consultant, well, we do it for about $26,000 a year. So we're gonna stick with option two. Almost done. Program funding. So just to give you a sense of the, the capital costs of the program, as I indicated, we've treated about 3,200 acres over the life of the permit so far. That, breaking that down into different types of facilities, structural facilities make up 1,500 acres of that. Total investment by the county has been $41 million, but we have a very strong grant program going after grant funding to assist us with that, and we have offsetted 14, 14 and a half million dollars of that in cost. Those alternative practices, the stream restoration and tree plantings, we've achieved almost 1,000 acres of credit at a cost of $5.5 million, and almost 3 million of that was covered by grants. We then have a couple of, of interesting free credits that we take advantage of. The easiest one to explain is septic upgrades. Anytime that a citizen upgrades their septic system to a best available technology, we get a little tiny bit of credit. And so we work with the health department to track all of those, and it's a very small amount of credit, but we do get it. The main source of, of that free credit is our buffer program. So we have requirements from the development process, development process for floodplain and water resources easements that protect those areas adjacent to the streams and prevents developers from taking down all the riparian buffer and creating turf grass right up to the edge of the streams. So those water resources easements, we have been able to convince MDE that there's a lot of value in preserving those and that we should get some credit for that. So we've gotten, we've received quite a bit of credit, 700 some acres of credit, which again, if you take 700 and multiply it by 35,000, we're talking 25 to 30 million dollars that we've saved the county by implementing that, that easement program. And then also related to cost, and this I honestly don't understand as far as the bureaucracy of the permit, but we have these permit requirements, they're penalties if we don't do it, but we have to assure the state that we're setting aside the funds for the program. So every year, we have to, we have to report how much money we have spent on the program, and every two years, we have to have a public hearing where we come before you all and basically outline what the costs are anticipated to be, and you all certify that, yes, we're going to pay for the program, and we have to submit that to the state, so. Annual reporting, so our permit year is the same as the fiscal year. So July 1, we'll be at the end of our FY23 permit year, and then we'll start with So July 1, we'll be at the end of our FY23 permit year, and then we'll start, well, it takes us about six months to work up our annual report, which is a copy here, and then we turn it in, in December. And MDE is currently reviewing last year's, and I would assume that sometime in the very near future, we'll get comments from MDE on this, just in time for us to then start working July 1 on our next annual report. So, but it basically outlines every aspect of the permit that we've talked about. Special programmatic conditions, we can pretty much skip over that. That just indicates that there are programs that the state has, like Forest Conservation Act and so on, that address new development, and we, the county, are in line with the state And then finally, Part 7 Enforcement and Penalties. A lot of administrative type information related to requirements that if we find something, we'll report it to MDE. MDE has the right to come and look at our records and so on and so forth. Severability, authorization of the permit, et cetera. The only thing I wanted to point out were the sanctions. Because this is a Clean Water Act-derived federal program and through the state, there are both federal and state penalties for us not being in compliance. So you can see the list there of civil and criminal penalties for us not complying with this permit.
Remember, Chris's name is on this permit.
And my name is on it. So if you want to change it to somebody else's name, that's okay. And then finally, our Bureau of Resource Management is the bureau that, that administers this overall program. Janet oversees the day-to-day operations. Pretty much everybody in the bureau has some role in this. Certainly, it's, there's a lot more that they take care of on a day-to-day basis, but pretty much the whole bureau is involved in one way, share, perform. So, a lot of information. You know what they say about engineers, is engineers are those people that get excited about things that nobody else cares about. So I've been dealing with the NPDS permit, not here, but in my, my whole career for 30 years. So it's something that, very familiar with and, and done a lot with over the years. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
God bless your patience.
No, I appreciate all the information and your dedication to it. Mr. Burke, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Are you sure? Okay. Any questions, comments?
I just, I, I appreciate it, Chris, you and your staff. I, I hope the other counties are doing their due diligence like Carroll County is. I'm not sure they are, but I hope they are. But I know we're doing it right, so I appreciate it.
Yes.
Absolutely. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
We won't mention other states, right?
No. Actually, there was just, you probably saw it, that PA was just successfully sued.
So we need Wanda to come in, and we'll do agendas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anything for open admin?
Just a bit on this.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing.
All of you have signed is the Manchester annexation from last week.
Is that, is that here?
In there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
No, you'll see those maps coming up soon. Probably a few months.
Reach out to Wanda, see if she's coming in. We'll do agendas.
Can we start going through it?
Yeah, go ahead.
And then we're going to go into closed for land acquisition afterwards. First steps. Well.
There she is. Oh, Chris forgot his. Somebody forgot their cup. I think that's Chris's.
Hey, morning.
Hello, Wanda.
Okay.
How are you?
Good, thanks.
So Monday, it's May 1st.
May Day.
It is?
Some places.
Okay.
For some people.
Okay. Um, May, May 1st, nothing scheduled. May 2nd, we have a Chamber of Commerce breakfast at the Tawny Town Library, and I think Commissioner Vigliotti will be the keynote for that, right?
So far as I understand.
And right now, Commissioner Kyler and myself will be there in the audience supporting you. On Wednesday, we have Board of Education Operating Budget Work Session, and I think that's more of just in FYI.
I think they're canceling that.
I think they are, too.
I'm not sure. They were, they were going to announce if they did. I, I, I asked if there's any reason for us to be there. They said no, and then they said, we're not sure we're even doing it.
Right. Gotcha.
Take it off.
And then 6:00 PM that evening, there will be a virtual Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioner Gordon will participate. On Thursday morning at 7:00 in the morning, there's the Annual Sheriff's Prayer Breakfast over Pleasant Valley Fire Hall. One, two, three, four, and all of us will be attending that. We will start open session at 9:00 on Thursday. Citizen Services will come to us for FY24 Community Development Block Grant or CDBG application on recovery housing for women and children. There'll be, then, we will recess and reconvene as the Board of Health at that time with the Health Department being present at 9:00. And then after that, we will reconvene back as the Board of County Commissioners, and we will go through a handful of other things. Land acquisition, exercising options for purchasing, two properties, the Robin Nesbit property, and the second is the Nicole Gasper and Michael Watson property, both through the Rural Legacy Programs. Text Amendment Referral to Planning Commission for allowances of restaurants in the agricultural zone will be discussed. Parking study for the current and future planned Carroll County Government Complex by DPW. Shotcrete Linings by DPW. 2023 Gravel Road Chip Seal Project, DPW will be talking. Current Term Contract for Structural Condition Inspection Evaluation Reporting, oh, for the minor bridges, I apologize, DPW will be discussing. And then we'll have a conversation on the Bandy Avenue Traffic Calming Device Installation. I believe it came over what was expected, the bidding. So we have to have a conversation. I also want on there, in open discussion on storage facilities we talked about.
Yeah, though there was a request to delay it by a week or two.
I had a.
Well, I apologize just real quick before, what, what did you just say?
Say there was a, a request by someone else to delay it a week or two, so I was going to talk to you about that. I don't know. What, whatever the board wants, whenever you want it. We could do it along with the agriculture.
Go ahead.
No, I just, I was just going to echo what Ms. Wyndham said. I, I think there's definite interest in discussing it. I, I think a couple of the commissioners requested another extra week or so to review the issue.
I'll do what the board wants to do. My concern is pushing this out further. You know, there's, there's decisions that are being made that are outside our scope. And, you know, I want to be what's fair to the community, fair to those involved in any development of this. So.
I have no problem discussing it sooner rather than later.
If you want to, yeah.
Yeah, doesn't bother me at all.
Okay, well, I'll ask Linda to.
But yeah, yeah, I'm fine with discussing it.
I mean, a decision may not be made necessarily.
Referring it to planning. The decision, if any, would be to refer it to the planning.
Right.
Yeah, but you don't have to either.
There could be other decisions that could be made as well.
I'll ask Linda to add it to the restaurant one, too. Same conversation.
Yeah, I think getting this, some clarification on it, I think is important.
I think, I think that's a relatively new, new information for some of us. I, I know the concern, generally speaking, was that we look at that issue as a whole throughout the county. If it applies to some specific issues and, and projects within the county, then, yeah, I look forward to hearing about that.
And then 5:15, at, yeah, 5:15 PM is Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year Event at the Community College. And it looks like Commissioner Gordon, Garen, Kyler, and myself will be attending. Nothing scheduled Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Commissioner Kyler has the podcast, and hopefully see everybody at the Veterans Celebration at 12:00 PM. On Monday, the May 8th Transit Advisory Council at 3:00 PM, Commissioner Kyler will be participating. On Tuesday, there's a public hearing at 7:00 PM where we will all be participating at the Community College in the Scott Center. And we will be potted plants, listening to what the community has to say. On Wednesday, Opioid Prevention Coalition Meeting, Commissioner Kyler will be participating at 9:00 AM. Commissioner Vigliotti will be participating at the Farm Museum Board Meeting. And then there is a Board of Education Board Meeting at 5:00 PM that evening. So.
That's, that's the actual meeting on a budget workshop, right? Okay.
So if somebody wants to attend that.
I will check my schedule.
Commissioner Vigliotti will check his schedule. On Thursday, currently, we have State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Update from Ms. Wyndham. So this is the FRF dollars that have been allocated and what has been executed, what is continuing to be out there, and what the next steps are for this. Okay. It'll be interesting what else gets added to Thursday's schedule, because that's all we have right now. At 11:00 AM, there's a beginning of the picnic, the Sheriff's 10th Annual Picnic. It's kind of a, a grab and go, or grab and sit for as long as you want, out behind the detention, the old detention center. And.
That is not open to the public, is that correct?
No, it's not.
That is not open to the public. Commissioner Garen, Kyler, Vigliotti, and myself will be attending.
Wanda, please add me to that as well.
All right. Okay. Good burgers and barbecue and good stuff. And then at 7:00 PM, 8th Annual Drug Overdose and Prevention Vigil over at the Portico, St. John's Portico. Currently, Commissioner Gordon, Kyler, and myself will be attending. Nothing scheduled on May the 12th and, yeah, please.
Mr. Gordon, do you remember the second date for Boys and Girls Club's Open House at, at North Carroll?
Uh, one second, I might be.
We ought to make sure everybody here is aware of that.
Let me see if I can find it real quick.
What is it?
The Hampstead Boys and Girls Club. There's two open house dates. One of them conflicts with this evening's.
Yeah, one of them's the night.
Arch ceremony, that, or dedication.
So we have May 9th.
May 9th.
So the other one is May 9th.
May 9th, 5 to 7.
Just put it on there for now.
And that's the same, but, but it's 5 to 7.
Yes, correct.
So, and, and it's, you don't have to be there 5 to 7, so.
It's our open house.
Yes, open house.
So it's the Hampstead Boys and Girls Club Open House, 5 to 7. Commissioner Gordon has the podcast on May 14th. Okay. How'd I do, Wanda? Okay? Okay. I need a motion to recess and go into closed for land acquisition, or a motion to go into closed for land acquisition? Either way. Motion to go into closed for land acquisition.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to adjourn after closed.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.